Thanks, everybody. This is a pleasure to see you faces rather than muted my mumble. And a squeeze given, and a wrap. So, thank you for coming. I'm your warm-up man. As I get into nuts and bolts, so appreciate it. This is the 26th day of February at one-third, and all this workshop part of this meeting together. It's actually a special to the OCC meetings, that's what it is. That way, you have all three commissioners here, we can make decisions, we can talk out loud, not worry about sunshine laws and all this. The real deal will listen to a lot of your comments, that's why we're here. And actually, I'm going to ask you a question. Why are we here? Why are you here? Haley, why are you here?
Well, it's part of my job.
We last supposed to have been to H R 127 meeting, but I guess that's when Dick and Carol...
Yeah, we did that this morning. What happened? More to that mission. We accepted it.
Okay.
Well, don't. All right, uh, who, anybody else? Why are you here?
I'm here because I live in an HOA, and I feel that they're a lot different from 25 acres.
Okay, she lives in an HOA, it's different, okay, that's it.
Yes.
We're not ready for you. Everybody's going to get a chance to talk.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes.
If people, when you speak, you come up to the microphone, that way everybody will be able to hear you.
Okay, and you don't need to do that just yet. Remember, this is the warm-up. Right, um, do the conform. We'll talk about process in a minute. I need another answer. Charlie, why are you here?
I'm here to give you my infinite wisdom about short-term rentals.
All right, short-term rentals, his wisdom. What I, why else are you here?
I want answers to questions.
Want to answer to questions. Okay, really, that, all that's relevant, but it's not why you're here. You are here because you love Custer County. We have the same interests at heart. I don't care whether you're for or against short-term rentals, that doesn't matter. What matters is, the ultimate goal is to do what's right and what's legally bound as well by both the Constitution and the state laws, and Arlen County zoning regulations and guidelines. That's why you're here. Uh, we're going to do more than just short-term rentals. This whole thing is a revision of the zoning and planning regulations and guidelines. Uh, you know, so why do you love Custer County? I know a lot of you have been, uh, been raised here. I've been raised here. I voted every election since I've voted up to vote in Custer County. Every one of them. How many can say that? You know, there's a couple more. There's one right back there, there's another one, there's three, four, five of us, six of us in this room right now that care and remember of the values, the characteristics, and the landscapes, the visions that we had in those days, and we are very committed to keeping them. Keeping those for our kids to come back to. We're keeping those so that we can make a living and be prosperous as well. So, so in order to do that, there are several things that we got to take into account. STRs is a big deal. I personally think, I think as time has evolved, different ways of making a living have occurred here. Not only is it land use by right, right, residential group land rights, as well as the, uh, leaving commercial, we got that with special permits. I'd like to have Vic before we get wound up here. What is use by right, and what does it mean? So, everybody's got a common background.
Okay, well, first of all, thanks, everybody, and good afternoon. Use by right, and it's, for those of you who have here, uh, have booked up the zoning resolution that Bill referred to, uh, this was started in 1971, and people were drafted this, something like that, Carol, and I think, uh, who else was, Fred Berry and others. They were visionary, and, um, they, they really wanted to maintain the, the character of the county like Bill was talking about. And so, one of the first things they did is establish use by right. And if you want to look it up, and some of you have it, it's on page 54, it's in section seven. And basically, what it says is that there's, there's use by right, like ranching, farming, and a single family dwelling, which we call residence. Everything else that, any other activity in the county requires a special permit. And there, there were different kinds of special permits. There's a special use permit, there's a special events permit, there's a home occupation permit, and then, uh, if we, depending on where we go, there'll probably be some type of the STR permit. And then, there's also a modification of, of this, of an S U P. So, and then, this is, I think it was fundamentally, really, a visionary thing that they did, because it, basically, they had in mind keeping this, this county, the special and special values that we have, keeping them the way they are. Between the use by right and the zoning, which is very unique, you know, we're one of, I think, three counties in the country that is a land use-based county. And, uh, those two things are the reason why we still enjoy Custer County the way they do. So, are there any other questions? That, take care of what you want.
That takes care of what I asked, and I want to also point out that there are other planning commission members here in the front. And throughout the, the rest of the afternoon, the questions that you will ask, we want to try to clarify, you know, and I want you to understand, the commissions here have not had any input on this. This is the process that we go through. The hearings have occurred already, as you know, and not necessarily all the hearings. This is the first time publicly that we've had a chance to interact and hear more from the public in person this time, for sure. So, there'll, there'll be other questions, and maybe we can answer some of those and get that resolved. And if we don't, there are options that we'll discuss here in a minute. I want you to also understand that the planning commission works for the Board of Commissioners, and they are totally in charge and responsible to produce these guidelines with your input. Who are you? You guys are our bosses, the reason we're in our suits. Everybody says, "You going to church today?" You may, if you've been involved with our meetings in the past, it's because you are our bosses, and out of respect is why we're doing this. You wouldn't go to the President of the United States Dinner dressed in, you know, without some respect for the office. I and our fellow commissioners here respect you all. That's why I say we have common interests, and we want to make sure that we listen and work with what your input is. And I know that Vic and his team have been working with you so far. And I know that that's been kind of constrained because of COVID, because of other excuses, because meetings are during workdays and all that. And I'm really happy you did take the time today during some work to come in and make sure we understood what you want out of, out of the process. By the way, Clint, our attorney back there, show him your tie. Good. He's got to see the tie. Is that the tie? That's a perfect tie, and he won the tie. With all of us.
Tied with one hand.
He tied with one hand. That's what attorneys can do. Um, all right, Vic already mentioned that this process was done with a lot of foresight from our forefathers. How great that was that we had those people in 1971 that said, "We're, we're going to protect the viewscape for the business." Yeah, or, uh, look, how come you guys came from wherever you came from to this county? I was born here, but you all came for a reason, for the same reasons that we, that have ever been natives here all our lives, taken for granted in most cases. I remember the first time I came home from college, and I came over to Cozy Flax and saw the range for the first time. The only place in the state, you can see a whole range in one swoop. You know, you go to other places, one mountain at a time, it's on the two or three. So, it's something unique, and we want to keep that in meetings, and we want to keep the character that they mentioned, and they, uh, that have charisma, whatever you want to call it, as well as to protect the health and safety of our citizens as we grow up. So, every time we look at a use variance, other than living in your residence, it is by process that involves just more, all of us. And it's not somebody making the decisions that you elected us to make for you to help get your input and make sure you have a chance to learn. So, today's meeting is the presentation, for the first time publicly, of this, if I should say, the first time publicly, you all had a chance to get some input, but this is a result of all your discussions and your input to the teams and compiled work with Jacky, Vic, and the team out here. So, we want to update these resolutions, so it's more than just STRs, but I know that's the biggest interest right now. So, for the first time that the commissioners have been looking at this, we've had it for a couple of weeks in its current form, and I got to hand it to them, they've done a great job of producing this and trying to do a couple of things, and one of the reasons you came here. It's low government bureaucracy. We don't want to encumber you all. I'm in the same boat, you've got, I've gotten a lot of input from you all, so has Tom and Kevin, on, you know, why this bureaucracy all of a sudden? Well, I don't know if it is, it's not supposed to be, and that's something we want to resolve today, and if I and Vic and the team can help point some of the things out and do away with a lot of room. We want specific questions. We don't want to hear somebody come up here and, "I've got these in the email." Good grief, this is bureaucratic. It's easier to get in communist countries, uh, a whole law passed than, than what it is going to be apparently in Custer County. We, we need to clarify that, uh, and make it understandable. We also want to make sure that, that this new technology that we've got today, that has created a new business opportunity in two ways. One is work at home, you've never had that opportunity before, home businesses, as well as working for a corporation half a continent away as well. So, we want to make sure we take advantage of that. And then, the short-term rental business is thriving, you know, and by the way, it isn't brand new. We've actually got several of those short-term rentals that have been occurring since the 40s in this valley, believe it or not. Think about Alpine. Right? So, they're, they're, that exists already, but it's going to be broader now. It's a greater opportunity for us to have opportunities for our kids to have a job, to support things that we never had when I was a kid here. You know, bucking veils, the hard way, but actually, especially when my father grabbed a stack and, uh, and not sitting in an air-conditioned cab with a radio on. You know, that was an opportunity, because mechanisms have gotten rid of that job for all the kids up here, right? It's one guy doing everything that would have proved a duty. So, we want to make sure we take advantage of that, and we're here to listen to you right now. So, we're going to get started on that, and that process is going to be pretty simple. We, uh, we would like to have at least three minutes, and we'll, we'll see how it goes. Be specific, give us a valid comment that we can deal with it, and then if we can give clarification, and we think from our plan to satisfy, options that we will look at as a board in the next phase of this meeting, which will occur after y'all are exhausted and where our ears are burning, that we will consider it for adoption. Now, we have options to adopt. Either we can take it like it is, as you're, you know, we can clarify a lot of the comments, and maybe some minor changes, where we strike up a couple of things, or we add a word here and there, or if not, then we can accept it with exceptions, to say we will take that piece out and pass the rest of it, and then we will send it back to Vic to say, "Okay, you heard it, what the input is, go do a workshop, do another hearing," or whatever it is, "Is that significant?" I hope not, I don't think that'll happen, but we have options. So, this is not a do or die today. This is a good opportunity to get our common interest together, and for the good of the county and for the love of Custer County. It's for us, all of us together. So, Vic and, uh, Vic's standing by and do his work, and I try to hip. By the way, public announcements, fat over here, you can get up anytime, you know, if you need a drink of water, get water out here, I can. I guess you guys are tough enough. Now, cut the tiny one. Also, I'd like to hip Tom, make a couple of comments from his perspective, and then go ahead. So, go ahead, Tom. Okay, I'm going to get to it. He's a new guy, we've been hitting him all the time. And he said, "Why I want here, remember, so I can't talk now?"
I have been contemplating, trying to defer a little bit here and there, but, uh, complex issue, and I think every one of us in this room realize that. I, you know, going through these, I've been a little, so, uh, what do you know, my mind hasn't been made up, uh, because I've been on, I've been on both sides, and I, I, I can see the issues that are raised on both sides. Hopefully, we can work through some of the, some of the problems or variables that come up, and come up with a plan that works well for Custer County, because it is, it is a very complex issue. I know a great feeling on both sides, and I could probably, I can relate to both sides of it. So, um, thank you.
Tom.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. Glad we're here. This is the epitome of being involved in county government. Appreciate everybody's interest, taking the time out of an afternoon, doesn't matter what side it is, issue you're on, we all need to be respected, marked, respected, and be treated accordingly. I did jot down some opening remarks, and I did write them down, and I'm a big fan of this, but I'll just quickly read through those, because part of this is in answer to some of the questions and concerns that have been brought to me via email, phone calls, face-to-faces. So, the purpose of the proposed amendment, this is all my opinion, which is certainly subject to question. Uh, so, the purpose of the proposed amendment to the 2018 zoning resolution in section 9.10, which I'm sure that's why almost everybody is here, we'll talk about this entire document today, but I don't think the rest of it's going to get a lot of traction compared to the section pertaining to short-term rentals. Section 9.10 is to allow short-term rental businesses to operate within the unincorporated portions of our county. We have nothing to say about what goes on in the towns. We're only concerned about the unincorporated parts of Custer County. Uh, of the 57 STRs reported, 29 of those are currently in violation of the county's Septic Regulations. Uh, from a lot of communications I've had, it's clear to me that a lot of people involved in the short-term rentals in Custer County did so without ever reading that document. That's very clear to me. And by that document, I mean the zoning resolution that governs land use in our county. Uh, section 4.6, point A clearly outlines the duties and responsibilities of the zoning office and the director of the zoning office. Section 4.2, point E sets forth the policies and procedures of the planning commission to consider any applicant's request, and section 4.2, point D, point four directs the planning commission to make recommendations to this board, the OCC. Section 9.1, point A clearly defines the OCC's role in consideration of granting special use permits in Custer County. There are five included, including a proposed short-term rental permit, a special use permit, Vic spoke to these, I think embarrassedly, being a modification of the special use permit, home occupation permit, special event permit, and moving forward, possibly a short-term rental permit. I received a lot of emails and phone calls pertaining to the STR in the last several months. Uh, some emails were carefully thought out and well-written, uh, others were based on emotion and lack of knowledge. But as a commissioner, it is my duty to list to all the citizens that wish to weigh in on this issue. In accordance with the zoning resolution, my choices on the matter will be to vote to approve or disapprove the resolution, change and approve it, approve part of the resolution, take no action at all, or refer it back to the planning commission for further consideration. I look forward to this entire process, and I truly do believe our actions regarding the amendments will set the stage for us to move forward as a vibrant community with a vigilant eye on the future of this county.
Thank you. Thanks, Austin. Okay, last word from me. I want you to put this picture in your mind. You, as a residential owner of your own property, whether it's 30 acres, 4, 2 acres, or whatever it is, have responsibilities for the health and safety of your family and the neighbors around you. You have obligations to meet the Septic Code, you have obligations to meet the, quote, building permit that you have ahead, and those kinds of things. A simple picture for a STR, in my mind, is it is a residential use of a home, okay? It is a residential, but you've got to put the responsibility, not on the county, I'm not going to become, for sure, a law on this watch, the homeowners association guy monitoring whether somebody's obeying whatever regulation or whatever, that's not going to happen on my watch, just mine personally. But you've got to make sure that that landowner is, is responsible, as you are, of your own home and your neighbors around you, and the ability to keep a Septic System there. That's, that's one way of controlling it, and the other way, so we've got to control our growth and keep our vision, is what we've already done. We've got a great planning and zoning process, we've got people that have the foresight, and we've got an opportunity to grow with time. You modify this thing seven times, this is going to be the 85. So, keep that picture in your mind, eliminate the bureaucracy, and ask questions. So, I'd like to open it up to a couple of hands here, and then please come up here and state a comment. Give me some.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I make some rules?
Oh, yeah.
We've got a timekeeper.
We got a timekeeper, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned that. Uh, actually, where is she? Uh, Tina, can you raise your hand? Tina's going to, she gives me two signs back. And one is, can I speak up? Because I'm not using the mic. The other one is, timeout, and I'll, I'll call you, I'll, I'll stop the discussion. And we're not going to debate, we're going to listen, and we're going to try to get answers, and we're not going to try to do anything other than answer. Please get your comments succinct and to the point.
So, what's time?
Time limit's three minutes, and we'll, and we'll watch it if it goes over plus or minus in your middle of the sentence, I'm going to chop, but I am going to cut it off. We'll go through the process to as many people as we can to break forward. Don't be shy, you know, you guys sit in the back of the church.
Bill.
Yes.
I would like to see.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, let it, yeah.
Um, if you ran an STR prior to 1971, you do not need to get a permit. I'm going to name the people that will not have to get a permit for a short-term rental. That'll be Alpine Lodge, Trails and Branch. Heinz, I know. Heinz Ranch, and down at San Isabel Lodge. Those were pre-zoning that was already in Custer County. They will not be required to get an STR permit if, I'm saying if, this passes. Thank you.
And one last comment on that, uh, permit fees, fines, et cetera, that's reserved for later, once we manage handover our property. Okay, we got, speak.
Good afternoon, Tom, Bill, Kevin, leaders of our county. Custer County, one of Colorado's most beautiful mountain landscapes, honors its rural agricultural mining and western heritage, and seeks to connect its future with its past by protecting local values, preserving community assets, respecting property rights, accommodating managed growth, and compatible economic development, and serving as responsible stewards of its inspiring natural environment. This is the vision of the Custer County Land Use Master Plan. The master plan anticipated inevitable growth-related challenges put in place to help plan future development within the county. It is an advisory document that respects individual property rights in balance with the best interest of the entire community. We are clearly in the midst of a growth-related challenge with short-term rentals, and here we stand. Our world has changed, growth is here, but we can have an influence to preserve our way of life while embracing responsible change to move forward. We can conserve our natural resources while attracting visitors to experience our strong rural character, scenic county, and support our local community. Before I continue, I do want to introduce myself as a community citizen, as well as chair of Custer County Tourism.
I was going to ask you to do that, and I'll take that opportunity now. Please introduce yourself.
You're not getting to my three minutes, are you?
Right, I'm, 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 I forgot. Uh, and also, be clearly and slowly your name, I know it's all about presentation here, but we know, we know the orders, we do. So, go ahead.
Okay. Airbnb.
All right.
Airbnb and PRBO have brought the short-term rental market into the mainstream. The rise of online lodging marketplaces has led to a growth in property owners renting out their homes. It is a convenient and affordable mode of stay for vacationers, while homeowners get a chance to earn extra income. Short-term rentals have become a nationwide travel trend and are essential to sustaining robust tourism in Custer County. If we cannot accommodate visitors, they will go someplace else. The Valley has less than 80 traditional hotel rooms. Short-term rentals help tremendously during peak season, as they allow us to have capacity, which strengthens the support of local businesses throughout the year, a stated priority of the Economic Prosperity Strategic Plan. It is a sensible and valuable residential use for our rural community to have short-term rentals available without impacting the in-place density limits established by the zoning resolution for non-incorporated areas of the county. All zoning districts allow agricultural and residential uses as a use by right, meaning that no additional approvals are required beyond a zoning permit. A short-term rental does not change the residential character of a single-family dwelling that is a permitted land use. I feel a proposed resolution does not uphold...
I can't hear. Finish up.
Really? Well, I'll, I'll end that I feel a proposed resolution does not uphold the vision of the Land Use Master Plan or the intent of the zoning resolution in respecting property rights, accommodating managed growth, and compatible economic development. Custer County is on the cusp of change. I know there is a strong desire by many to keep the status quo in our county, but the status quo will not support the economy of this area and allow businesses to thrive. And after the tour on Wednesday, Bill, we've got a justice center to build. The only way to progress with this short-term rental issue is with common sense, collaboration, and clarity. Let's not make a mistake of making a decision that will have unintended consequences that may go on and be very damaging to the county and our community. Thank you for listening. God bless America.
Thank you for your comments, and also just... We'll have an opportunity to ask a question later, as well as if we get into the specifics, rather than the broad statement. So, thanks for that. Next up.
Hello, commissioners, my name is Kim Mallett. I'm a snowflake, I'm an old snowflake, been coming to the Valley for 42 years. I would like to speak in appreciation of my excellent neighbors, and the responsibility exercised by neighbors is a very important feature of our life here. I believe that running a rental business is a business. I would expect that people who rent the property to strangers would report their income. I'm, I'm very surprised and unhappy to learn that more than half of the current short-term rentals are in violation of Septic Rules. are in violation of septic rules. That's not good stewardship, and it's not good neighborhood. I support strongly the permit, the permit principle, and I believe that an important part of that would be local management. It is possible now to run a short-term rental with your cellphone. You can live in another country and collect rent through your cellphone. You can open the front door with your cellphone. And not only do we need to be concerned about added pressure on our local services, our sheriff, our EMTs, our health service, we also need to be concerned about the burden that short-term rentals to strangers can place on neighborhoods. And I'm concerned about the area of possible conduct by renters that does not necessarily break the law, but violates important customs. For example, who do you call if the renter's dog is chasing a cattle? Who do you call if the renter brought 15 kids who are up and down the road all day under ice? I believe that there should be accountability on a form resident or local managers, preferably within 10 miles of the property, so that not only would that give jobs to locals who would become those managers, but it would give the neighbors some peace of mind. So thank you for your attention.
Thanks for staying three minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Charlie Allison, and I wanted to go last, but Kim made a perfect segue, because she was advocating for, or talking about benefits of having a local management company, and that's what I have. I started operating as a single house, as an STR in town, and in 2017, and then 2018, when I decided to go into the county, I did agree the resolution, and then I did an equal Jackie. And the word at that time, which I have in an email that I sent to all you guys, is that all it does need is a sales tax license, there's no variance, there's no permit, just get a sales tax permit. So I've spent three years building a very solid business infrastructure to support, to manage properties for other, for property owners. And because, and a key part of Jackie's response to me in email and meeting was, at this time, knowing this would happen, so I didn't go out and buy a property, I chose, I modified my business model in the county to do leases. Now, that's a very important part, because with a lease, I have legal responsibility for everything that goes on that, and legal possession of that property. One of the things that doesn't work for me is that the resolution pretends that I don't exist, and that I don't have possession of the property. It's all about the owner when I've asked to accommodate back there as an agency company, not just some guy with a cellphone, my big brother-in-law, that sometimes is waiting, sometimes isn't. There are seven people on my staff, I have a very complex, very involved business infrastructure. I don't know if there's any business near town that's hired seven people in the last year, but that's exactly what I've done the last two years. And so it allows us to establish good quality, and we're responsible. We have to be student, to have guests, I turn them down, it's like, wait a minute, six, these aren't six males under 24, are they? No, we're not going to take you. Now, I actually get deemed, they're not exactly our reservation, but I'm going to do that. And what I do is I talk to the neighbors and say, this is what we're doing, here's my number, Paul, maybe there's an issue, and the numbers of issues are so, so small. Let me tell you this, I have a much bigger issue with a guy across the street from my house, that's an owner, whose dog parks 20 hours a day. So I'm just saying that we're not, we're not crazy, we get it's an argument to manage it well and take care of that property. So I think that's the gist, if I'm just advocating, doing this administrative level, if I recommend for last night, I'm just be calling, picking winners and losers, it should be at a very administrative level that might, you know, it's simple.
Okay, thanks. Three minutes, thank you, Charlie. Next, you got it. Do you have a plan to commission that?
No.
Oh, I thought you were going to talk about the wrong person.
Dr. Don.
No, no, you're not.
Dr. Don Mudler. I'm not a political citizen, it's just our, I pursue-
He said, Dr. Don Mudler.
But I'm, he gave me the same way, this statement about him, that he hasn't had any problems. I'm the vice president of the HOA in Grand Riveri. In the last 10 months, we have had five, we have only five STRs in Grand Riveri. We had three major events, one of which was a group of people coming up to Texas and discharging lethal firearms within range of multiple other houses while trespassing on the daybreak property where they were rented. The property owners have renters in who have been coming onto the common property, and particularly also trespassing across adjoining properties of private lots next door, because they do not know where the boundaries are. And they've been told, in lots of cases, hiking's right outside the door, so they think they can just wander off wherever they are. The other thing that's happened, of course, is we've had two instances with fire. One was where a bonfire was started, and one of the property, or a work member saw it and made the people put it out. This was in the summer during a fire ban. We've also had campfires in the woods, under trees, that without the proper preparation of a campfire, that we've had to put out. These have all been led into the STRs. And I want to make you aware that in the last year, we've had 22 inquiries about buying property in Grand Riveri to install an STR. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Come on, Matt. You can pull that mic down.
Oh, I have trouble with this probably, because I'm over the hearing back here, so I hope I don't repeat something.
Pull the mic down.
I am, I'm Anne Collins, I live in Grand Riveri, a neighbor of John's. One of my main things is that there's a huge difference between HOA, having STRs and HOAs, and those in on 35 acres. There are four of HOAs within a mile of me. If you go by the way the crow flies, that's more like a half a mile. And I heard this morning, I don't know if it's true, that there's another one being built. I lived here 27 years ago for peace, privacy, I wanted to know my neighbors, if I had any other know these people. They come in though, yes, the ones closest to me, I hear them, are the A's, some of them are fine people. I have no problem with that, and I have no problem with them on 35 acres, but I don't believe they belong in HOAs. And they do trespass, they don't know any better, they come here and hike and play. I'd like to read something from one of the ads for the HOA that's right across from me. The quote is, hiking is right out your back door and all around the property. There is a beautiful stream, and you can hike all the way to the valley, and it goes on and on. And another big problem I have, that same house, the owner is from Oklahoma, kids know what's going on, and I think that's true of almost all of them. They go live here. What do we do when we know they're breaking the HOA laws? Nothing, we can't do much of anything, so that's why we-
Okay, thank you. Okay, hands up. Sort of a timid hand up right there, come on.
My name is Dorine Seibel.
Say it again.
Dorine Seibel. And I hear what they're saying here about the STRs and the problems that they're having, but what I've got a question about is, how does that affect those of us who have not had a problem? We've had an STR for 23 years now, we have never had one complaint from our neighbors, from the people that are on the place. We live there, we make sure they know what the rules are because we live there. We don't want the place to burn down any more than anybody else does, so we're there to watch over everything they do, and we never have to go there when we are not there. So my question is, we've been compliant for 23 years, what happened? What suddenly happened that now we are feeling responsible for all the problems that the other STRs are having? We don't understand that, so.
Okay, thank you. All right. You got a second to that, do we?
My name is Glenn Seibel, and my wife Dorine and I own and operate, trying to rent rentals. And we are opposed to any permits for short-term rentals. And these are the reasons that we are opposed to. For 20, 23 years ago, we bought our property, we had, Litten, Litten, the zoning officer at that time cannot go a place, and we explained to him that we had it as our built bunkhouse for short-term rentals. And he laid out the details on what we need to do to be compliant. And we followed up all those details right to the letter of the law, including putting a completely new incentive septic tank, septic system in for our, for our short-term rentals. So we don't understand when we became non-compliant, when we were compliant 23 years ago. After more than 500 rentals in 23 years, I find it interesting that the county eagerly welcomed our sales tax the whole time that we were setting that in. And they also welcomed the several hundred thousand dollars that were generated into our economy here in the county by those rentals. And that's just one short-term rental owner, and a non-compliant, supposedly, and yet all these benefits were welcomed by the county. None of the reasons given at the previous meetings that we were at are valid reasons. One was businesses can't be run out of the house. Another was land uses strictly agricultural or residential. And then the third one was something about housing density, and I'm not sure what all that was. And I hope I have the opportunity maybe to elaborate on these, but three minutes will allow that. The tourism board, the Economic Development Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, and the lodging tax were all created to increase tourism here in our county. And it seems, it seems like now the goal is to limit or restrict tourism for places for the tourists to stay. And speaking of the lodging tax, I'd just like to ask, how many of you short-term rentals people were notified when the lodging tax went into effect, what, eight, 10 years ago, maybe? How many of you were notified that you were non-compliant? I don't think so, nobody. So the lodging tax went into effect even though supposedly they weren't compliant. Another fact that I want to raise is that we just came through a year of economic loss because of the virus, and that loss for our county will never be recovered, we can never get that back. And why-
Summarize quick.
Pardon?
Your time's up, summarize real quick.
Okay. Why, why at a time like this would we be considered something that hinders our economy rather than trying to build that back up? And I have some other points I'd like to make, I hope, you know, other people get a chance, or we can kind of do, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Glenn. Next.
Hey, good afternoon, my name is Philip Stark.
Push it up.
Push it, that's all he's been down, sir, thank you very much, this is my first time with a microphone. I'm here because I'm American, my name-
Say your name again, we'll start the clock.
My name is Philip Stark, Philip, and I'm here because I'm American, and this is what we do, we get together, we work as a public between, and this is why I'm here. This is democracy in action, I appreciate it. And I kind of see both sides from the doctor and the short-term rental manager. I think responsible is a term that seems to stick in my mind, and if someone is having a problem at the HOA, or does list something false in a document, says hiking's right out the door, that sounds like an individual being irresponsible, not a tourism or an STR, or an entire community being irresponsible. So responsibility, I think, is a key term here that would bridge the gap between the doctor, the HOA concerns, and Anne that was mentioned. I see their points too, but the future is now, and to deny those people the ability to bring people to your cafes, your restaurants, your businesses, your land. This is our land, this is your land, we are all Americans. I served my country so we could do this. And I respect the HOA, and I respect the short-term manager back here, Charlie. The key word is responsible, I read your draft, I think it's fantastic, there could be some changes. The question is, is it my land, or is it not my land? Is it your land, Jackie? Is it your land, Bill? Is it your land? I think it's my land. I don't think it belongs to the HOA. They govern it. Call that dumb lady up where the government manages that list of that thing, and say, get that hiking thing right off there. Maybe there's a three-strikes turnaround. There are, this is kind of simple, really. There's a lot of notions, but there's a responsible gap between that man over there that's making money, and the HOA here, the HOA that's making money. Thank you very much. My blessing, Eric.
Thank you. It's a very bad one.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to speak today. I just want to simply say that, Andrew Miller, we say Andrew Miller, we are STR owners here in the county, and we just want to speak in strong opposition to the current resolution proposal. You know, in general, as a lot of the points are already made, we just, we don't, we don't support the bureaucratic nature of it, because of the burden that it poses on STR owners, and the overreach, and specifically, the politically-inspired process for the STR permit and its threat to private properties that we hold so dear to the county, have greatly restricted economic opportunity and prosperity in one of our largest economic sectors by placing arbitrary limits on the number of STRs in our county, which by definition limits economic prosperity and opportunity. This is even more important considering that our status as a county is a certified low-income community with 25% of residents under the age of 18 living in poverty right now. And as someone with a graduate degree in economic development, I can categorically say that the current proposal limiting STRs will do significant economic harm to our community over the long term, while taking county's commitment to private property rights. As a clear example of the proposal's bureaucratic nature, a close-sized process, it takes three distinct procedures to obtain a permit, a zoning meeting, a zoning committee meeting, then a final BOCC meeting, which could literally take months depending on timing and monthly meeting schedules. Instead, we strongly support changing this process to an easy, equitable permit process, Colorado Springs has the same thing, in-person, a simplified, and run administratively to obtain a permit in person. We also strongly support a revised draft that simply allows for STR permit applicants to legally attest to compliance with water, septic, and occupancy limits, and nothing more, which is what has been presented to us in the first place as a reason for engagement in this process, all of which we strongly support. Furthermore, we support the rights of an HOA to address STRs in their own distinct way, separate from the county proposal, which is their right to do, if they feel more strict measures are required, which is the purpose of the HOA. We agree with the comments of Commissioner Canada with regard to STRs being a residential use, and assessing the STRs' legal attestation to basic facts showing responsibility that are already required of all owners in our county, septic, water, and then specifically for STRs, occupancy limits, is the best way to proceed with a simplified, revised version of the proposal. We live here and we love our- We live here and we love our county. We seek to maintain this unique lifestyle and conservative values. It is a blessing to live here and we hope you will support a simplified revised draft. Thank you for your time and consideration, it means very greatly to us and our lives here in the county. Thank you.
Next up, back in the back.
Hi, how do you do? Thank you for all your time, everybody. Katerina Sky. I did everything these fellow speakers spoke, so I'm going to save my three minutes for something else, more personal. I agree very much with that we're all here to protect the valley, we love the valley, that's what those that haven't been born here have come here for. I've managed this here, my husband and I, who's grown up in fire fighting, we fight and protect this valley and many other valleys across the US. And have come here because we love it and want to continue living here for them. Having VRBO and Airbnb, which are incredible platforms, and I really apologize for anybody that has had a bad experience. Personally, I think there's things that can be worked out that are not of such bureaucratic nature, more simplified as the previous speakers had said. As a new, somewhat new citizen, I'm only three years a citizen of the United States, I've lived here for 35 years. I love this country because people have the freedom to do justice in business as they choose, with respect to the local laws. So I very much agree that we should have rules for septic because it protects all of us in the long run. But I do not agree with HOAs making rules for our entire county. And because of some instances of bad experiences, we've had over 300 renters in our counties in these three years, which helped us actually transition here. And in fact, we've only had one incident in those two years over where we had found out, I was on fire at the time, if I had found out, I would have thrown out the people. The people that come here support the businesses. We have supported over 20 different individuals and businesses in these last three years. Not to mention what all the other businesses here have been supporting in the county, who supports us keeping our laws, supports you guys, supports, you know, what you do. We need some of that revenue. So I ask that we have a more simplified process also to save some of the work for these guys while protecting us. And the current proposed thing is very cumbersome. And in my understanding of the constitution and how our country is run, some of it feels like overreach and some of that has already been mentioned and I won't linger with that. So thank you all, that's all coming together, I figured it out because this is an awesome valley. We want some people to come here because they're going to become like us part of the community. We have a lot to point to you. Trust, protect.
Next up, the shooter. Here, over here in the car, right? Mike. Rob Cannon.
My name is Rob Canterbury, and I'm here today representing President Ray Allen. First of all, I appreciate all of you sitting here, and I know that all five of you have expressed your beliefs and types of property rights. And you're trying your very best to do that. I grew up, a quote that I heard for years is self-government will often work without self-discipline. And I really feel that those who are going to be honest about it are going to. I agree with Jackie, she needs some sort of permitting process so she knows where they are in case of emergency. I mean, there's a number of reasons. I do disagree a little bit, well, a lot, with going through the entire process because we have been through it before, we went through a special use permit on a sale almost years ago. Many of you sitting here remember that. And it takes months and months and if it's tabled, it can take six or seven months. But I believe that there could be a simple process done in-house possibly to make, because they are a very viable business and they're good for the community. I was on the planning commission 23 years ago when the Seifels did the first one. And I will tell you that they've been above board every time. That's a paid advertisement. But people like that who take pride in it are going to take care of their businesses. And so we're not opposed to a simple process, but I don't think it needs to be quite as entailing as what we have here. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Cleveland. I live in Antelope Valley. Currently, I have a property manager who makes about somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000 a year off of managing my property. I pay her quite well. I have no problem doing that, it's for my convenience. The question I have, or the point I want to make, certainly for the people that have had problems with short-term rentals, I sympathize, complete, 100%, I wouldn't want the same thing happening to me. I've been through the regulation, I see nothing in the regulation that will stop people starting a fire, stop people riding their motorcycles, stop people, I don't know, using a septic tank illegally, I don't know. The regulation says it's going to limit the number and you'll have the choice to do that. There is nothing in there, once a person has a legal permit, to stop kids riding their motorcycles on the road or ATVs. So if it's a problem, let's solve the problem. Let's not just add bureaucracy that does not address the problem. If the problem is septic, why would make people get a good septic system? If the problem is motorcycles on the road, ask the people doing short-term rentals to not get, just say, look, it's illegal to have people brewing more, or whatever. But I've read through the entire proposal and there is nothing in there to stop the things that I've heard people legitimately complaining about. Nothing. I see nothing in there to stop that. So if it's just a matter of limiting the number of people that come in on short-term rentals, that is, you're throwing a dart at the dartboard, hoping that that lower percentage is just good people. And it doesn't work that way. So that's my statement.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Kid Shy and I was here in 1971, but I was a teenager there. I remember my dad working on zoning and those uses by right are very important at the time of lots of discussion. Back at the time, there were more of it, sand gravel operations, there was logging, and there was mining, they were all used by right as well. And the thing that made Custer County's zoning unique and still unique in state is it's based on density, density of structure. The 10, 5, 35, 70, a zone. I'm used to solving problems, that's what I do every day in my profession. Identify the problem, gather the data, and develop steps for solving it. This particular problem, I can't seem to get past number one, identifying the problem. I don't see a lot more issues for the county whether you have one owner of a family living in a home, or you rented to one family, or you have 150 different families, each there one at a time at any given night. Traffic is the same, septic use is the same, water use is the same. There is a problem with the number of betters. The number of betters is how you define the water and septic use. If they're exceeding that, they're already breaking a regulation. The other issues that have been brought up, noise, trespass, rubbish, and open fires, those are all handled by other regulations and statutes and requirements that are already happening within our zoning, the state code, state laws, or whatever. If we're not enforcing those, I guess that's a different kind of problem, I don't think this solves that as well. I think we have an owner set a task, which two people have touched on. Proof of water supplies, that being a well permit and approved O W T S, that can be done at the zoning office. Prepare a site plan, you need to have specs on what shows on that site plan before you just tell somebody a site plan. Otherwise, you get an apple square of it. Proof of ownership, is that documentation based on title, covenant, a deed? And what about the mortgage hold? You need to know if there's a mortgage on the property and if there's a lot for this kind of use. The use is the same, I reiterate, it's a residential use. And a special use permit is for use outside of the permitted uses, which is a residential use, it's only permitted, it doesn't belong to special use in my opinion. They have to submit an application 30 days ahead of time, attend B O C C, planning commission, allow someone on their property to inspect them, wander around, whatever they do, look at everything. Notify all the adjacent property owners. Now, adjacent and adjoining are two very different words. You can be adjacent to something without adjoining it. So if you're saying adjacent, how far out from the property are you going with the notification? I mean, Brinkley County is an adjacent county, so if you're going to use the word, it probably ought to be adjoining. The thing I guess bothers me the most is the density of the STRs determining how many of a particular type of use in a given area that has that as a use by right, you're going to decide how many you're going to have. Maybe we should extend that to ranching, sand gravel, and all of the other uses as well. Plus, we're going to inspect the STRs and all of the other single-family residences that are not.
My name's Pierce. Yeah, I'm Doug Solomon here. My wife and I first started down to this, gosh, when we first started, in 2005. Yeah, because. In 2005, we bought our first two pieces of property, we essentially bought a block five. And so we love this county, we want to spend the rest of our life here. And we opened up this STR to help supplement our income. I mean, we're not getting rich on this. So I understand, the young men over here, you're upset, you know, about all the bad behavior. And last year, we had trespassing on our property. We've all experienced ATV and other traffic, driving at high rates of speed. Creeped us, caused damage to our private roof that we maintained ourselves, that actually had drug use in the neighborhood. We had a deer poach on our property. So all this behavior, bad behavior, is not exclusive just to STRs. Yeah, all these acts require, not my or guests. So we built a two-bedroom cabin back in 2017.
Be gone.
2017, we built a two-bedroom cabin. And we wanted to possibly rent this out as an STR. So we contacted Jackie, she told us to do a three-bedroom septic, we had no problem with that. We follow all the rules. I believe this is about a certain beauty of the county, because you can go after other things that are bad. This county's got the drunk yards and people's yards, things like that. There's other home businesses being run, they're not being regulated. You know, I want to thank Tom about telling us, well, those are the first numbers I heard about the septic, that is, that's unacceptable to me too. You know, because you got, I mean, that's just not fair to anybody. I mean, you've got groundwater, everything like that, you're completely, so. Well, I would like something more reasonable, less cumbersome, I would like to give the bad actors taken care of. Make sure all the septic's are taken care of. I don't care if you have a basic bad system, make sure where everybody is. What we want to do is make sure we bring families together, help the local businesses grow. Munt those businesses to higher Custer County residents, help those people be able to feed and shelter their families. I'm asking the commissioners to reject this current proposal. Let's just go after the bad actors and try to get them to come up with something better. Thank you.
My name's Tobias. I've lived up here for only about four years, I'm coming from Petal West. I always take my kids up here, I just love it. And I never want to name that perfect area, Hertz Our Navy. I am an SD, or a rental owner. I actually never had problems with my neighbors complaining about children, fires, any problems. People actually enjoy seeing different families from different areas, join area in a responsible manner. I'm happy to show people our beautiful area, you know, in a responsible manner. Prevent people from going up to the mountains camping and destroying their fair. It's just, it's a responsible route to see the area, most economy. I hope that they don't classify this as a business, only because I believe each HOA, you know, they can vote and then that rule, whether they allow rentals or not. A lot of the regulations, there seems to be a lot of it. I hope it's simplified a little bit from what's taken. I actually agree with what the rules, even with our septic, has asked me to do in a responsible manner. But I also think that sometimes it's overreached. So I hope it's simplified a little bit. That's all I say.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Tobias.
Tobias.
I know.
Oh, Tobias. Tobias, Thomas.
Tobias.
Oh. I should have called Jackie.
Hi, everybody, my name's Mason Simpson, I've been coming to this beautiful county since 1971. My grandparents built an A-frame in Mason Simpson. I think this is the most beautiful place in the world, on the planet, pardon. I agree with you. I said that first because the second thing I'm about to say is not going to be very appropriate. I'm also a lawyer, I'm also a New York City lawyer, but I'm also a full-armed lawyer. And I actually have a question, I hope this is appropriate, ask a question.
That's my answer.
Okay, that's not what I'm here to do. My question is, how did the board come up with the cap of 85 units?
Remember, we're here in this city.
Okay, so as a lawyer, and I'm not trying to have a legal argument here, but one of the weaknesses I've seen in this resolution is, and these things are difficult to draft, so I'm not denigrating the document at all, but they're very difficult to draft. But one of the weaknesses I see in it is that there does seem to be some arbitrary and capriciousness built into that document. And that is a basis of a legal challenge. It's also, as HOA people know, it's a basis to challenge HOA regulations. That's one thing we can't do, we have to have a rational basis to the regulation, to the problem. And things like, you know, 85, a maximum of 85, that has to be justified. And things like, you know, 85, a maximum 85, that has to be justified, so there has to be a study, there has to be a conclusion. Otherwise, you open yourself up for not having done the diligence and you open yourself up for a constitutional challenge. One more point on that, and this is kind of thinking this through, looking through, if we have 85 permits, and these people are all doing the right thing, and they renew their permits every year, we now have a preferred cost of 85 land warrants and everyone else gets 12 pounds of sand. I don't see anything that says that the permits won't be automatically renewed on a pro forma basis. And again, that's just another reason to, someone's got to justify that number, otherwise there's going to be legal problems. Thank you.
Are you representing someone?
I am. I'm representing myself, and I am representing a couple other people, but I'm not going to disclose who I'm representing at this time, because I know how this can work. There can be retaliation, people don't like lawyers, and I'm not here to start fighting, I'm here to provide information and to try to help. And I think that's one thing that you guys have to consider is, how is, what are the weaknesses here? How can we avoid dumping a bunch of money on the employees? That doesn't help anybody. And I think you gotta, you gotta take another shot at this one. Thanks.
I have a question. The, I have a question, the, some statements have been made, this is real, about my, I have been in touch with water resources, Colorado Water Resources. And a lot of the HOAs in the Southern that are involved in swamp ditch court decree, some of you may be familiar with that. They are required to be single-family residential only, and it's household use only. That brings in another problem with, you know, somebody violating that decree and jeopardizing a waterway. But the thing that they told me in my conversation with the commissioner in Denver was that, in effect, if they're going to be using something other than for a single-family, that it was going to have rentals or anything like that in it, then they have to have what they call a corporate or something else type of water permit. And they will not issue those for that permit wells, which is what, all of the wells in the Southern subdivisions that are involved in the swamp ditch. The other thing is insurance. A lot of people are not aware that most homeowner's policies don't cover rentals other than what's called occasional. Comment on that with the carriers is, occasional means, once a year you rent it out because the masters is coming to town or something event, and you can rent out your house for an occasional event. If you go beyond that, you're supposed to have special rentals and renters insurance or landlord insurance. I think if there's going to be something that's added or taken away from the document, it should be a requirement that the S T Rs have proof of that type of insurance, because if a renter does damage to adjoining property owners, and the homeowner's insurance will not cover it, for the damage caused by renter to the adjoining property's damage, the person that's damaged has no recourse. They have no recourse at all, because other than trying to file suit against somebody and pulling plenty out of the, out of the owner, where do they have insurance?
Well, he got another question. Okay, I'm going to finish my, I'm going to finish my answer if I may. It's one paragraph. What?
He got a question, maybe a question.
Point over here. So should people be allowed to speak in second round before we get to talking, before we exhaust the opportunity for everybody to speak once?
That's good and wise.
I also hope you're speaking.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, no, totally right.
I should have done it earlier.
Totally right.
But it's okay to do that, because we want to get the questions on the table. The next phase of this in two minutes will be getting some answers to some of these points, and we'll get the planning commission to call. Go ahead.
Do you want me to, do you want me to put this in the form of a question?
Yes. And then we're going to stop.
Okay, it's just one paragraph. And it pertains to the Economic Prosperity Strategies Plan. The guiding value of that plan in making prosperity decisions was to be a supportive community, quote, "A community that supports one another, respects individuality, and is actively engaged in preserving our lifestyle. Our government is an active partner in prosperity, offering support and services in a sustainable way to protect what we have and leverage our assets. I know everyone here appreciates what it means to live in Custer County and keep its unique character. Short-term rentals are an asset that provides the opportunity to accommodate growth in tourism. Short-term rental availability is essential to our county's economic vitality, to serve local residents as well as attracting tourists. So the questions I have to the B O C C is, do you support economic prosperity in our county?"
Okay. Anybody that hasn't spoken yet? First time, anybody else?
Can a listener speak who's on the Zoom call?
Just one second, we got one, and then I'll get you on there in just a second. Come on, Lucas.
Hello, I'm Lucas Sepp. I guess the one, one or two comments that I have is, the one, without the short-term rentals, restaurants take a hit. And if the restaurants don't make it, very soon you start losing all the rest of your businesses. I was hoping there'd be more people that own downtown businesses here that could speak to this, but they're not here, or I don't recognize them, so. But yeah, again, you're right, we do have problems with tourists, what we have in our businesses as well, and we've had to definitely kick them out, have the sheriff come down, pull them out of the business. So it's not just short-term rentals that sometimes have caused problems, it's not always just the mountains, it's in our businesses as well. I have several friends in several different states that are getting out long-term rentals, and they're going short-term rentals before they're dumping their properties at fast rates. The long-term rentals are no longer a sustainable way of doing business because of our government regulations that all the rights gives to a renter and nothing to the property owner. So again, I just want to emphasize, the short-term rentals bring in a lot of people that shop at the businesses, spend their bucks, they tip well, which helps the payroll of us. Very great. And I travel through a lot of towns in Oklahoma, Texas, Nebraska, Kansas, that have three or four boarded up hotels, and we do not want that here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lucas. Got a question online. Can you hear us? Mike, say your name.
I'm Suzanne Wheeler. S U S A N E.
Call that.
W H E L E R.
Got it.
Suzanne, S U S A N E.
Okay, Suzanne.
So, yes, we are. My question is, if in fact, the state or S T Rs is advertised, to me, it becomes a commercial activity. And if lodging tax is charged, and sales tax or whatever, lodging tax, it becomes to, in my mind, a business. So I think the resolution needs to state clearly that it's a commercial business, and that it's a commercial business permit that's required. And that's my basic question, if that's true.
Okay, thank you. We'll address that in a minute. Other question, there's one in the very back of the, come on, Char.
I'm Charles Vogel. I'm currently the president of Custer County Economic Development Corporation. Prior to that, we talked about, what, seven or some years ago, when we incorporated the short-term lodging tax, I was one of the committee that supported that and brought it to the public for including. In fact, at that time, we had an excess of 70% vote. Once we realized that was bringing money from the outside of the community, county, opposed to the burden to the local economic development. Currently, we are certainly supportive. Our principal goal is to increase the economic viability of our county. It's been several comments about where we are in that spectrum. We obviously can appreciate anything that improves the economic viability of us. Lodging tax has allowed us, especially in the last few years, much of more promotion of our tourism. And I think regardless of how long we've been here, we've visited this valley at one time, and it's why we're here now, regardless of whether our family's been here 100 years or 18 is my cases. So I think this is a component of our economic viability and our growth. Best we can do is to control it, regardless of whether it's short-term rental or other aspects of growth. But I think, two, we don't want the burden on people who are willing to make their investments and stuff in our community and the economic viability. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Is this a question here or no?
This is a question here. Everybody, first time speaker, put it up. Yeah, bring a question up, and then we're going to open up, it's going to be a, there's a few more specific questions now, and then we will, we will get into the interaction with understanding and development of the board or commissioners.
I just, Philip, start again. I had a question specifically stated, page 4, section 7, land use by rights. My question is, again, whose land is this? I just spent $50,000 of my money today. I just spent $50,000 today in your account. Whose land is it? Is it yours? Is it HOA's? Is it? It's mine. It's my right. The land use says ranch farm residential. Historically, 100 years ago, there'd be cowboys and buckhouses running cattle up here, hundreds of people on that land, who've been pissing all over the place. And they're breaking the law. So my question is, if you have a page 4, section 7, and it says ranch farm residence, and based on the testimony here today, section 4, 7, responsibility planning, and if there's a fire, call the fire department. If a kid's driving a vehicle on a public road, he's breaking county law. So all the laws that were complained about are already covered by law. So I'm a little concerned that I just spent $50,000 today to buy a land, and now I don't even know what's mine no more. So my question is, whose land is it? Is my land yours or mine? I'll wait for an answer. You paid cash for it, I'm assuming you have a cop. Right, so I'm covered by ranch farm residence, right? Is that correct? I have no idea. Well, right here, right around the road in the ponds, right where my good doctor runs his H O A. I'm a veteran, I've bought from my country. So I don't need you to tell me what I can do on it. I respect your resident H O A. Now, my land is my land, your land is yours. If a kid's driving on that road, call the cop. If they start a fire, call the fire department. If they're advertising falsely, call a lawyer, tell them to take it down. None of this picks is not a good problem. And it doesn't fix mine either. That's my land, I want to know whose it is.
Okay, then we'll get to that. Thank you.
Come on, Allison, again, and it's a question, but also part of perhaps a solution. And that's that one unintended consequence of all of this brought is that this herd of cats, meaning the short-term owner-operators, are semi-organized. And so what has happened in other communities in this circumstance is that a community has formed a self-regulating group, where each reinforced responsible management. So after that, I don't mind being able to, and you can see her raise her hands or something like that, in terms of who is willing to be part of that, so that then, you have a persistent issue, you've got a pattern in a certain area, the sheriff calls or something, talks to the group, group vote. Phil, on it.
Thanks, partner. Is everybody, again, first time? We are, we are.
When we have a second, this is Bianca from Radiance on Zoom. I have a question that I can read to the next one.
We've got one in front of you here, so move your hands.
Perfect, thank you.
My name is Steel Glenn Cyler. And I have some comments, I'll try and bring it in the form of questions. One question is, why was there not a simple solution used to solve this whole, this whole thing, and change the zoning regulations for land use to say agriculture, residential, and rentals? Noncompliance is gone. The other question I had was, if we consent to permits, then are we admitting that we have been noncompliant, which we are not? This whole permit resolution, I think is a bad idea, needs to be thrown out completely, just like the dark skies and the building code proposals were here some time back. It is nothing more than an infringement of property rights, a push for big government and detrimental to the economy. S T Rs help pay your salaries, don't hide the hand that feeds you.
Another question on the line, and what happens? And say your name again. Bianca? Bianca, you're on.
So I do have a question. I think it's been lightly addressed in the past, but I'm still liking a little more clarification. And just as a note, I have lodging properties that are commercially-sown properties in town as lodging. So if all these S T Rs get shut down, it's actually, if somebody wanted to see it that way, it would be my benefit. I'd get a lot more people staying with me. I don't personally think that's good for the county. I am surprised that there aren't more restaurants and other businesses in town, seeing just how many people, you know, brought money there. So my question is, it's kind of threefold. Why are, why is the residence, or why is it, why are the S T Rs as businesses being focused on and not so much the other, other businesses in the county as well, being held to the same standard? The port, so that would be one part of it, the behavior of all residents or residential homes in the county being held. And I know there are people who do not treat their properties completely correctly, either an S T R or a full-time resident, but there are many that are breaking many of the laws that you'd be holding, or regulations that you'd be holding S T Rs, who permit residents aren't. And then that third part to that is, kind of the sub of that, that second one is, you know, if it's the Christmas time and people have 20 of their closest families up that's overtaxing their septic system, nobody's really, you know, going to be regulating or monitoring that. I understand there are some possibly S T Rs that on a consistent basis try to overrent, but from what I understand from some of the past meetings, that is not an act, reportedly so, I don't know if, not reported, that's not really a consistent occurrence. So that's kind of a three-part question, when you guys get to the answers, I'd love a more complete question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another issue? Oh, come on, okay.
I just, is question time?
Yeah.
I understand and respect the huge line between county jurisdiction and homeowner's property association, and you have nothing to do with that, with covenants of private property. But my question is for the gentleman with the little tie back there. Is it a reasonable thing for an HOA to disallow S T Rs within their bounds of jurisdiction?
Homeowner associations have covenants. Those covenants, when somebody buys their land, whatever covenants are in effect at that time, those are the covenants. An HOA can't come in later and say, we're going to change the rules regarding their property. I think I've heard some people talk about that, the HOA can come in and modify the rules. They can't do it, those are rules that go with the land. So whatever the HOAs have now, they can't come in and say, now we're going to come up with this new rule that says, this is a business, or you can't do this. with this new rule that says this is a business or you can't do this." If it's in there already, that's one. If it's not in the covenants, they can only enforce what was there when the land was sold.
Thank you. Okay, next, Ted. Another question, anybody? All right, we're gonna move into trying to understand and clarify what I think and I've heard. I've heard a lot of new questions. I've heard a lot of issues. And I've also heard, Tom brought it up earlier, some of you have not understood the regulation as proposed enough to understand that it is different in some cases. So let me point out one case, and then I'm gonna ask you to help and move to kind of facilitate, I've copied down some of these, and I'll ask the question and then plan and wish you can answer. First of all, the, we did not classify, remember I say I started off saying I'm a strong rights user, my land is my land, I can do what I want with it, rent it to anybody I want. And that's a hard position. However, when you start classifying it as a short-term rental, the state of Colorado and the federal government classify those as businesses. We didn't. They are businesses. And consequently, we have to treat those the same as we do any land rights issue. We stated that upfront. You have the right to use your land for residence and for the agricultural uses as you see fit per the zoning and water requirements. That's what helps limit this, and that's the good news about density control on properties. Now, let's say, we're bound to do that, right? That's a requirement, not, and mention here, we didn't classify these as residential or rural things. So if you keep that in mind, remember I also caveat it with a "but," we have to adhere to the laws and the safety regulations you brought. Good point. We know there are people, you know how we found out? It's easy. You go to the advertising on the website and you can see people advertising people on a two-bedroom house. That's easy. And that is, so what the intent was is to reduce the burden, this is just my observation of what's happening here, it's becoming a pain point, is the intent is to put the burden back on the landowner to enforce that. If I'm the landowner and I'm gonna have a big party at my house, and I have weddings and other things, I can't let them in the house and use my septic system for six people. What do you do as a responsible landowner? You get a bunch of porta-potties down there. And so it's important when you, the landowner and STR, it's not my problem to go and tell your people, you have to make sure that they have the knowledge and what the rules are of the county. And I think I'm gonna let big answer this because I don't know. I've heard and I haven't had a chance to go through it, but they got a process to educate the landowners. And nobody has said, "You're gonna lose, your grandfather is gonna stop business until you get compliant." And who said you weren't compliant? That's what I wanted to say in the first place. And so the only way you know that you're not compliant with what your vote, with whether your septic system meets if you have water right now, is really the big two. And then responsibilities on the landowner to make sure that that person can be notified during a fire, let's say a national forest fire. Who do you call to evacuate? You phone them. Cool. So let's let them discuss that a second. If they would point to whatever is in there, and maybe the verbiage isn't clear enough and we need to understand that.
Which verbiage are you talking about?
Start with the, it isn't the current...
Well, yeah, when we initially drafted this, we didn't have the word "business" in there. And that's what we talked in our discussions. And that's when, yeah, that's when we decided that looking at what constitutes business, it's not a constitution business. If you look into it and you look at the tax laws, it's not consistent, but, okay, all right, I'll go there again. But the best we can find out is that the federal government considers short-term rentals as business. And the state statutes also indicate that. And even, we checked with, for example, some literature from Airbnb, and they referred to it as business. So we felt to make sure everybody understood what we were talking about, that we would put that definition of business in there. We didn't have that initially. And then the reason we did that, and it seems like to me, and I think Tom alluded to this earlier, is people still don't understand use by right. And it's very clear, it's been here a long time, I know somebody mentioned they had heard that they were concerned about not being compliant, but it's very clear that any activity that is not used by right is not ranching, is not farming, is not a single-family household dwelling, is a used by right. And that's exactly what our, what our current regulations say. And so I don't know why there's a difficulty in interpreting that. Does that answer that question?
Go ahead, Ted. Not quick. That's good.
A wise man once told me, "Words matter." You told me that. So in looking at words matter, first off, the uses allowed by right, farming, ranching, one, single-family dwelling. Definition of a single-family dwelling, a structure with cooking, sanitation, and sleeping facilities used or designed to be used as a residence for one or more individuals living as a single household that has a septic system. I do believe that every short-term rental fits into the uses allowed by right of one single-family dwelling. Also, definition of residential, designed for people to live in, providing accommodations in addition to other services. So if words matter, look carefully at the definitions of the words. We all have opinions. That's what we've expressed today. And so the success of today will be if we can collaborate on an opinion or an agreement of what that is. But a single-family dwelling is a short-term rental, so it is a used by right. Words matter.
I agree with you, definitely. Words also matter, and the matter is it's a business activity. And this document says that any activity about what is allowed here is required to have a permit. We're not trying to permit, wait a minute. We're not trying to permit STRs. We just wanna make sure at this point in time, we conform to this. That's all, simply all we're doing. Okay? And it is, we've defined it as a business activity, and it's not allowed by, in the current resolution, and therefore that's why it requires a permit.
I agree with you that a short-term rental is an income generator. Whoever was on the phone about commercial, in your resolution, there's a difference about commercial because commercial, and I brought this up before, and I know Jackie's already looked at, commercial is defined as the sale or rental of goods or services to consumer traffic. So that's the difference between commercial and business. You are right that a short-term rental is a business, but how is that different than home occupation, which is also a business? They get a permit, they get a permit, but a home occupation in your resolution is about a page and a half of regulations where you submitted a four-page document for short-term rentals.
Well, you're right. The home occupation is entirely different. The home occupation is much different than the proposed STR. We looked at, when we started out this process, we started out with a special use permit. A special use permit, for those who are aware of it, is a lot, can be a fairly long process. You have a presentation, you have a hearing, they're a month apart, and then it goes to the VOCC. We felt that we ought to be able to reduce that, so we tried to do that, reduce it down to one, basically one meeting. And so, and the other thing, there's a number of things, and you've read, I know you've read that home occupation, it had incidental to living in the house, and the owner has to live there. Lots of STRs, the owners live on the state, they don't even live here. There's so many differences that we decided that we needed another permit, but we didn't want to be as burdensome as the S U P, and that's why we did.
Okay, let's not dwell on that just for a second. We've got the issue, and what I got out of that is the fact that it was fine as a business caused a reclassification from a residential classification use into the need for a mission to give a permit. Is that right?
That's, then I'm gonna defer, plant in my life on what I say here, when we talk about that business. Correct, yes. I mean, I have some other things to add here, but...
Okay, we're gonna defer to more discussion on this because this could end up on, you know, where we get together.
I just hope you've looked at the Court of Appeals case, that distinguishes between commercial activity and businesses. It's still a good law, Colorado.
Well, I was gonna add more about this argument about residence, and it's my land and I can do what I want. Residence, the legal definition of residence is where somebody lives permanently. If they're gone temporarily, they intend to come back to it. That's how residence was intended in our use in our zoning resolution. It's not, it's a home, and anybody can live there. You can own it, but you don't have to live there yourself. You can let other people just rent it whenever you want to for short-term periods. The residence in our zoning resolution, the legal definition that I'm going by, and I think was intended by the individuals who first passed the zoning resolution, we expect you to live there. That's your permanent home. You're gonna be there, you're gonna raise your family there. That's where residence is here. And as far as it's my land, I can do what I want with it, does that mean that if you wanna have a landfill on your property, you're free to do that? If you wanna let people park junk vehicles there or dispose of...
That is what happens.
Yeah, or dispose of animal carcasses on your property, you can do it. Obviously, that's not the case. Just 'cause you bought the land doesn't mean you're free to do whatever you want with it.
Okay, we have, we have, Ted, anything else?
Do you think that the confusion starts because Custer County is a land-use county, and we don't give building permits, we give zoning permits? Anything that you do above agricultural and dwelling and outbuildings, we consider that you need a permit for. So when people say, "Well, there's a lot of businesses being run," I have a list this big of all the permitted businesses in Custer County. No, you don't know what a home occupation is. A home occupation, you have to live in the dwelling, and it's important. I make in lampshades out of my dwelling. That is a home occupation. So I believe that a lot of the confusion is, you love this valley, you moved here, read the document. We want to keep our valley like it is. We're not shutting down any short-term rentals. Yes, the cap, we'll adjust the cap. I don't understand how you can, and I can shut you down right now. I can shut you down with the state of Colorado's septic rates because you are advertising too many bedrooms, too many people, and I got a whole list. There's 28 of you that are out of compliance right now. I have been waiting a year to see how this regulation's gonna go. You are out of compliance with your septic system.
All right, regardless of this being passed, you can do that anyway, believe me. And that's the case of any landowner that has a problem. But we're here to listen and I wanted to clarify some of the questions. We had a question in the back, it's the same question.
No, two.
Go ahead. Okay, come on up.
Okay. Two questions, and I don't want it to get too esoteric, it's weird. Brock Flynn, Mountain Land Properties here in West Cliff, I've lived here for more years.
So we're hanging really heavily on these words here, as we should. If I have a garage sale, is that a business? For real? If I have a garage sale, is that a business? If I sell some crap on eBay, is that a business? You know what I'm saying? And then the other one, why would you wait to enforce those violations? That's what the county's for, and it's what the state's for. We want people to have the right-sized box for their food. So, why wait and sit around for this instead of going on and doing it?
Because we needed some regs that said cease and desist, and I was just waiting. And I would think that the short-term rental people would be very happy.
Oh, yeah, and I agree, but like I say, going and enforcing is, if I have a house and I got a barrel in the backyard with a PVC pipe coming out to a black button, you're gonna come visit me? You might as well go and visit the everybody in the county that doesn't have their food right.
Yes, and I told the county commissioners, after this meeting, everyone's getting a letter.
Cool.
Yeah, you go.
That's a hell of an issue.
The confusion about lots of businesses, what's commercial, and it's well-founded because it's not at all well-settled. My lawyer in the back, I'm sure, will back me up on this. The Court of Appeals in Colorado looked at this variation when the HOA tried to ban short-term rentals. And the HOA said, "Hey, the zoning here says there's no commercial activity allowed." And the Court of Appeals said, "Well, short-term rental," and someone owns and lives in their house, and the rent said, "That's not commercial activity." You know what? I found that hard to swallow myself because of common sense or someone's exchanging money for a purpose, but that's what the Court of Appeals said. So this is something that needs to be focused on, and when you write business, you're gonna open yourself up to a fact, to an argument that, "Well, business does dollars operating. Business, sometimes business does other things, like the good bill to the community." They're not always, and so really the question goes, "Well, is it commercial activity?" And there's a case law that says short-term rentals aren't. Will that stand up when the Court of Appeals come back? And she said, "Maybe, but that's the current state of affairs." So it isn't a well-settled fact of what is business, what is commercial activity, and it's not hot to set and steal.
Say your name one more time. I've never...
Mason Simpson, again, this is just, yeah, this is just, again, identifying that there are nuances here that really do matter and would matter for litigation sadly.
And you're a land use, are you a land use attorney?
Yes, I am a real estate attorney, broadly, involving HOA covenants. And I disagree with some said about covenants here, but I'm not gonna go with that now. So the answer is, yes, I am.
That's coming to an end, and I appreciate it because I lived through it, you did it better than I did. Extremely complex.
But Mike does.
It is, you're right.
I'm no lawyer, but, but you can get almost any interpretation you want. And we started out, just from the standpoint of an activity being other than used by right, and the only reason we put that in here is because of the input we got from STRs are on, so that's, that helps a little bit.
Yeah, I understand why you did it, and it's just, it's just all the more reason why everyone should figure out a way, which everyone's not totally satisfied with.
Wait, that's deadly sorry. Had one right here for a long time somewhere. Where is it? Somebody headed a point back there. Where'd he go? Come on. Get, let him get up and, you've been up a lot, you've been up a lot.
I said, that's what I've said in some workshops for, what are years at a time, not since I'm...
Were you, you can beat up, yes, you can beat up.
Beating up these words, I understand, it's a real problem. But I think there's, I've seen a distinction between use and then what you do with that use. You know, I've got a residence, and now maybe I can make some money renting out a room. It's still residence, but now it's classified as a business. I buy 35 acres, and now all of a sudden I can grow some hay and maybe have some alpacas, and I'm gonna sell it. It's gonna turn into, I'm gonna advertise it, put a sign out on the road that says "A for sale." I'm now under this definition of business. So I've taken, my agriculture turned into business.
And that's a fact. And that's agriculture, right?
Sure, but I remember when this board stood up for ranching and passed a right-to-branch resolution to protect that right of use.
I understand your point, but everybody, that already exists and you can have that because you've got a right for the agriculture.
You also have a right to have a residence too. And I think what we're talking about is who gets to live there, whether it's somebody that I get some money from to live there or they're out here, I live there. When my son turned 25 years old, I started charging him rent to stay home. He was paying me a little bit of rent every month to do that. And I suddenly turned that thing into business? Should I have declared that to the state because now they define a business for the purpose of taxation? Is that the way they define the difference between commercial business and all these different things? Just for taxation? Yeah, I'm trying to think of it. Exactly, you're exactly right. But at that point, did I step outside of what my zone allowed me to do was live in my residence because I charged for someone to stay there?
Keep it, keep it clear. You have the right to rent or move anywhere and not be a resident. It is a clarity, clarity, that's a different issue. But when you're talking short-term, asking for classification.
So now it's, now it's, now it's the late of time, now it's the late of time that I get it?
Yeah, I'm not arguing with you. The argument.
No, no, but I.
Somebody made it for you.
So what I'm getting at is to turn it back. So if we go and decide that we're going to base it on time, it's still the same use. So now we're going to base it on how long that person stays there, then, you know, maybe I only grow hay three months of the year. If I grow it for four months of the year, is it, am I now in a different classification? See, we're parsing these words, but the words are important.
You made some apple.
No. We're talking about use and then we're talking about making a benefit from that use. One is a business and the other one is a use, but the use didn't change when we suddenly started to get it.
Six point four, structure standards, A, residential structures. Debbie Adams. Okay. Oh, well, you're right, you answered my points. Single-family dwelling, A, used by right, B, requires well permits, C, requires unpercepted permit, D, must adhere to height requirements, E, must adhere to septic requirements, F, used, four, human habitation. Doesn't say anything about a family, whether you have two kids and a dog, human habitation. So the structure standards in the zoning resolution, that is what a short-term rental is. There's only one question with B O C C. How prosperous do you want the county to be? That's really the question. And then as far as this need, and I understand it's a valid need to know how many short-term rentals are out there. And you know that I have presented to you a much simpler draft of a resolution that satisfies the septic, water and occupancy. I think it's a matter of keeping it simple instead of complicated, keeping it without so much bureaucracy and meetings in it because everyone does have a right to do what they desire with their property. And you're talking about tough times here. A lot of people use it as income. So really the only question about how you determine what this resolution will be, I do believe simple is better. How prosperous do you want this county to be? Answer that and you'll get the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to just.
Say your names.
My dishonest, I'd like to address some of the comments overran about businesses. First of all, how do you differentiate someone that you rented 32 days versus somebody that rented 30 days? It's no longer a business if it's a long-term rental you're selling. I don't, I don't, that doesn't make sense to me. Secondly, there are a lot of contractors and electricians that I go and run businesses out of their house because they don't have a policy, fear of being penalized. Are they in violation because they are running their business out of their home?
No. No. Because they leave that structure to go do their work.
If you offer bookwork in their house.
Yes, but by having a home occupation, you can do home accounting.
Okay. The other thing is a business is different than a supplemental income. I doubt that very many of these short-term rental people have, have the short-term rentals as their primary income. Our primary income comes from commercial properties that we rent. So I'm running that out of my, I'm doing that business out of my house. Is that in violation then because I run a business out of my house?
Because you're doing the accounting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Isn't that a business?
Under home occupation, it is. Under home occupation, you can do accounting. There's a list of what you can't do, but it's incidental to your house.
Okay, so I'm doing accounting for my short-term rentals.
And I can do accounting underneath your home occupation.
Okay, so then it's more business. You're not running your business. The other thing, the other point I wanted to make is there are a number of owners of short-term rentals that don't live in the valley.
Yes.
So they are not running businesses out of their house because that doesn't apply because they're not living in Custer County. So it's okay with them, short-term rentals, because they're not running a business out of their house in Custer County. So there's just a lot of things here with this whole business thing that I don't think make sense. The other point I wanted to make is it has been brought up at the legislature meeting is I was at, had this meeting about the 70, 1971, what they did. And those places that were already smaller than immediate acres were brandfalling in. We own one of, down on the valley shore. And they weren't required to get a permit, they weren't required to buy more acreage, so they could comply. There's no reason that these short-term rentals that are existing right now can't be brandfalling in. And, and the violation that you have, the 28 violations that you have, why not deal with them and enforce them and let the rest, let the rest of them go?
What would you like me to say?
I think you were addressing two separate issues there as far as home occupation and the short-term rental holder. Two separate issues as far as renting a business out of your home or whether or not a short-term rental is considered a business. They're, they're both addressed separately in the zoning regs. The home occupation is already a part of the existing regs now. And so just from what I heard, kind of like you were blending the two together.
Yeah, as far as timing on what's the difference between 30 and 32, we didn't pick it. Somebody else made that argument.
That's exactly right. And what Kevin said is true and that's the reason why we didn't do a home occupation and we went the other way, exactly what you just said. I guess it's a different situation.
Anybody with a deaf is, you're deaf. Oh, man, you were meant.
This is Kim Molyneux. Yeah, I'll be quick. The lady who said Woods Mather mentioned that residence includes a single household occupancy by a single household. And I would submit that it's not a single household between a different group of unlocated people occupying the house every day.
Thank you. Okay. And say your name. I know, we don't, but we need it.
My name is Philip Dark and this is always fascinating, Markerson. I've traveled the country and I've traveled the world with my journey and I've seen people try to do what we're doing right here. Talk about a problem, fix it without making more problems and getting other hurt. But it sounds like you're going to get yourself into a lot of hurt because if you put in the cap and if you're telling me there's a lot of definition about a dwelling here and I love what they're working here, it's, I came here to invest because I love new land. But I have a mother I take care of that has a heart attack and a broken neck. So I travel every month and go back home to my mom. So why can't I, if I'm bringing out my home once a month, am I now a business or am I kind of a part-time guy? Because I'm still living there. So I think you're going to have a lot of people issues with people like me that say, you know, I rent my thing out once a month where I take care of my mom. But he rents it out three weeks, so what's different with being three weeks? What about four weeks? What about five weeks? So it's, I think the proposal makes logical sense, but then when you start on gravity then, man, there's an attorney here already and I'm sorry, this can be very hard to find, you know, in my business because I'm taking care of my mom. And 100 years ago, you talk about protecting the ranchers, what about the short-term rental people here? As soon as I go into majority, if your job is to protect them, we're not selling cattle and hay like we were. We're, this is the land. I drove out here Main Street six weeks ago and I was looking for land and every third building had a land facility. And now I'm at this meeting and I'm not to be sure if the land is going to be taken away from my right. But I'd like to rent my land out for once a week, or once a month so I go take care of my mom to supplement my income. Is that a business or am I just a smart guy?
Or sneaky?
No, look at these ranches. It says bunkhouse in your residential, it says bones in your home, I've written it all. It says residence. That is my residence by definition. Is it not, attorney?
So.
Is it my residence? Swear you're not. Because if it is, then it's not a business.
All I need to point out, and you made a good point though, is that none of this is in spelling and nobody said it was a cap, it was a proposal.
Well, my question is, is that a level or a commercial?
You made a great point.
The question is, what's a residence is what it sounds like the problem is. And then once you start trying to pick this thing apart between that attorney, this attorney, you're going to have some fees and you're going to, is it monthly, come on? Do you need to strike a line, Russians? There's a lot coming somewhere.
Okay. Come on. I look better than that.
Hello, my name is Leanne Bear. Ran to our turtle vacation rental.
Name is on the mic, keep it posted.
I don't, the germs of it, sorry. My name is Leanne Bear. Okay, ran to our turtle vacation rental. My question for you is, depending on whatever type of proposal or regulations that come up, what's going to happen with the current short-term rental owners? Do we have to go through this process, but can we still keep our business going? We've got reservations into July and if we have to go through this process, which looks like it's going to take a while, the six meetings that we have to go through, then, you know, what's happening?
Okay, real fast, because we've covered it and the answer is.
Yeah, we're going to get it shut down because you rented out your rentals far in advance and you're just coming off the winter. And then plus it's good that we, you come to my office, you get the paperwork, I get all your paperwork together and then I schedule you to be compliant commission and then we schedule you to go to the board accounting commissioner. I'm hoping that we can trim line this down to maybe a month, a month and a half so that we can just start popping.
We need more of one at a time.
Yeah, I mean, and that's another thing, you're going to have a meeting for every individual S T R with the B O C C. Could you have a.
You do it at a time.
Okay. And then we only get a list and commissioners are pretty good and we say, Leanne Bear approved, they'll, they usually look at it saying, no problems and we say no, and then you get approved. And I'm not saying they rubber stamp it, but I'm saying that you know it, it should be shut down. Okay. Because it's not in writing and I don't want any surprises. Oh, now they, okay, we got it.
That's why we're listening.
Okay, thank you.
And that's why I made you a model. Okay, there's no, there, come on, Charlie.
I know. Charlie, I was in last time, I think the sports folks a little bit on the land.
Can you record it, Charlie?
No. I'm speaking up. Relative to the use, I subscribe to the database that measures exactly what's going on with the short-term rentals on this political data being in.
Speak on the mic.
And the.
Hold that mic there.
All right. So this database tells us how many, the average occupancy, the average number of guests. I did analysis on 2019 and the, and the average occupancy is 52% and the average, average number of guests is far below, it's generally less than half the capacity.
What's the data, Mason, why?
Absolutely, yeah, well, no. It's a nationwide service, but the data is specifically for this county using all the listings that are in area and being in the R V O. So it's real data. And the average number of heads in S T R 2019 was one per night. The other thing about use of water is that most of the, my properties I manage in the county, I don't do the laundry here because it takes too long. So you're down to half, you're half the occupancy in terms of head count and then we're doing laundry somewhere else. So there's far less capacity in terms of mobile families, there's only, well, I can't say, there's, there's families in terms of people, but there's not, nevermind, I'll just leave it at that. The land uses are far lower than what you, when you take the extremes and extrapolate that at 365, we're just not using that much water.
It makes it seem like it's beginning.
Too hot to charge for it?
I heard somebody say, side day.
Don't pick up the mail. Ooh, no more, unless you.
There it is, I'll go right over here. Where is he at? Andrew Miller, I am kind of curious and there's not been really any direct discussion of why this needs to be, it may be on administrative approval through the Pan's zoning with Jackie, which I did for septic, it was excellent. I love her with Jackie, she knows this county probably more than anybody else. And why it needs to go beyond her and our attestation to something that should already be in existence. Legal water, septic, and of course the occupancy is septic. Okay. I will answer. Yes, sir. Because we were elected, not, and if we're going to have an issue, then I want to be accountable to my bosses, not Jackie doing anything. And I've already forgotten, this is a common argument online, why is some bureaucrat, it's not as answerable to me, that's fair, making a decision that affects my life. That's what we're paid to do. So that's what I want to be and so that's why I listen to you all. Yes, sir. I do understand that it also politicizes the simplification, which in every other aspect is just administrative. I don't want to look at it politicizing any person. Remember how I started this off, we got the same goal, we're the same people and we want this value to be what it is. And that's the duty of heaven, the people that are of all cross-sections of this value give us recommendation. For you. I understand the perspective and say for septic, does the B O C C also approve? Yes, sir. She can have all of them, squeeze she wants, she does a lot there. But she can conduct us before we kick somebody off the septic system or out of the house. But like for my approval, for instance, I can go to two additional meetings or something. That is a serious issue. That's a different, different process to get the permit for. But if you violate it, it becomes. Correctly, I understand that, but if we're already, you know, the records are already in the office for things like water use and septic. And that's a check mark and a legal attestation. And that would be something we'd expect for the group. So in other words, the idea of these extra meetings with plans, like. Okay. Because they want to track stream land and so do we. But I still maintain that we want to be accountable. And for the bad players, absolutely, they don't think any S T R over this period. The second point is everyone seems to have agreed that a long-term rental of 31 days plus is just an arbitrary accretious number. So if I'm renting one month at a time, you know, 31 days, I don't have to fall away against, is that correct? Yep.
No, 32 days.
32 days. And so there's no, do not all these same issues apply to a long-term rental as well? You don't need to make sure their septic's are. No, yeah, they, they, that is always.
With, yeah, the occupancy, but the occupancy for long-term rentals. They have the, there's no permit process without there.
They can be found to be that as a citizen, as, as are we, which is why we support those.
Thank you, sir.
Saved by the bell.
Can I tell Jackie, thank you for saying such nice things about me?
Go ahead.
Welcome, Jackie. Thank you.
Always follows. Another question down here.
Another question.
Eric, there he is. I know we hadn't heard the last one yet.
You started. Hello, my name's Rob Horts. I'm a twenty-year veteran and I was looking for a place to find a home. Because I didn't have an opportunity to have a home for the last four years I was out in the mountains. Uh, so nonetheless, we come across this area not too long ago, actually, maybe fifteen years ago, it doesn't seem like too long ago for some. But to us, this is a place that we wanted to look at. I still work. I work and fly as a pilot. So I fly all around the world. Uh, question is, is, uh, when I'm looking at this, because we've got a couple of others, since I've got military moves, I've got a couple of houses that we've rented out. And it comes down to, there's two things I'm gonna really look at. One is a business entity, which we know it's a business. Anything that generates income by the IRS is considered a business. Whether you're a short-term or you're a long-term, uh, it doesn't matter. You're a business. Okay? Now, the part that we're kind of, we're not distinguishing that that is a standalone item. The other item is usage. And usage, we're talking about residential versus, that's it. It's just residential. And there is no, the other one is commercial. I'll give you commercial. So, but I, I do have a document here that goes through, uh, different, uh, court proceedings throughout the country where this has been argued over, over again. But they kind of muddled it too. They wanted to bring business into residential, but it just doesn't jive. Now, here's the problem. So I just bought this property and I'm renting it out, right? So if my HOA says you can't have business, which in their mind was not, it had to do with residence, it had to do with actual business. So if I'm selling tires or I'm selling, you know, I'm conducting business, people are coming and generating, we're generating business. I get, that's, that's what we're, we're saying. We don't do that. But if you say, hey, you're now a business, long-term rentals, short-term rentals, based on the HOA because it says business cannot, can no longer be tolerated.
That's an HOA.
You're causing it currently. Can I give this in?
Sure.
And it goes against. And it goes against the precedent that has been set throughout the country. This has been argued in many different places. And it always comes back to the point that says, hey, the home is a residential use. It is not a commercial business. And I get it, it is a business. I, because you generate income. We're paying you money. We're bringing money into the county. We're bringing money to this area. We're bringing money into Uncle Sam. And so it is a business, but it's still a residential use.
When you, uh, uh, sign up for Airbnb or any of those, HomeAway from Home, actually on their website is, is saying, let us help you with your business.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh.
Absolutely.
And, uh, so also you're identified at, with your taxes, like you said, with your business. But let me tell you that the thing is, is the state of Colorado will not charge you business property tax. So you're not, you're going.
And they could.
And they could.
They could, which I think is a foul. But they could. You're right, they could. And some states have done that.
Well, could you repeat your last name?
Horts. Horts. Horts.
Z.
That's exactly how that's spelled.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Chairman, I have a question from the chat.
Oh, good. Online, you got a question?
They wanna, they don't wanna talk, they just want read.
Oh, they want you to read it. Yeah, they want me to do the reading.
This is for Biondo with ratings. Will she talk to us?
You wanna break the rules.
Why SDRs or these regulations only when home occupation businesses or long-term rental properties slash residents don't have a list of points to address and meet as well? Some have employees or meetings with clients, for example.
I keep, but.
It's, uh, long-term versus the STR.
Why SDRs or these regulations only when home occupation businesses or long-term rental properties slash residence, don't have a list of points to address and meet as well? Some have employees or meetings with clients, for example.
You got it, man. For your.
Yeah, I'll already answer that one.
Say it real clearly in the mic.
There's a difference between, oh, shoot me. There's a different, I didn't see. Uh, there's a difference between home occupations and short-term rentals. And no, we do not regulate long-term rentals.
What is that?
Come on back.
Hi, it's Catalina Sky. What is the difference, um?
Short-term rental is thirty days.
Mm-hmm. No, no, I'm sorry. So let me clarify. What is the business? What is the difference between a home use business where like somebody said, you know, your clients own your property and bring stuff and, and, you know, long-term rental, like what defines the difference?
In the mic. She's a shoe, that's her part. She's a shoe.
So far. Uh, okay, so when you come into the zoning office and you say, hey, I wanna do this, then I sit down with you and I say, what kind of business do you wanna do? And if it's insuffient to your dwelling, like you still live there, I did the lampshades, accounting.
Yes.
Um, certain businesses, like people sell from eBay and stuff. So that, if you, if there's not substantial traffic or trash, then you would qualify it as a home occupation. And on our website, we have all of the list of home occupation.
Can I ask a quick question? Are there variances allowed in businesses and this, explaining? And if a new business, you have to consider something else in terms of division or a point?
So a home occupation, I do that administratively in the office. But if there's something like, uh, you would come in and you would say, you know what, I'm gonna do this, I'm just gonna use the one that's coming up on me. I'm gonna do this RV trailer repair and we're gonna have customers in and out, it's off a highway and stuff like that. I'd say, oh, no, this doesn't qualify as a home occupation. You're gonna have to apply for a special use permit. And then I walk you through that process.
Okay.
So it, it varies on traffic is the main, the main one. You gotta be living in a house and have a room where you would do the extraguritior activity.
Okay, cool. Thank you. That was very clear. Um, on another note, if I may add, um, two things. The first one was for us, for those that are opposed to expanding and so forth, I just wanna remind you all that, um, we hear your concerns and we wanna work with you all. And we also know that by having people come, whether they come short-term, long-term, or declared snowbirds, you know, we, we all need each other. And by people coming and seeing our beautiful valley here, whether they end up buying here and turning over to the people that are aging out or that are passing, we need that revenue from the people. And, and we need people in other parts of the country that come visit us here to help protect the beauty of the valley. And if we don't have room enough to count.
Good. Thank you.
Well, can you guys talk into my ear?
Yes.
Oh.
I'll just come back when I have a fresh one.
Okay, I'll get you. Go ahead.
I heard you making a comment that we wanna keep the valley the way it is. That is not possible. We live five miles, we live, we live five miles out Collie Lane. In the last, when we lived there, there was two branches along there and that was it, in five miles.
No dust and no washroom.
Now, in the last five years, there's ten places have been built along Collie Lane. None of them are short-term rentals. If you wanna keep the valley from being over density, whatever, why don't you extend the valley for the eighty-acre limit? Why don't you extend it a quarter mile out each way? But what is happening now is not keeping the valley the way it was. We used to see herds of elk, herds of antelope, deer, all along that five miles out there. Now it's all broken up, thirty-five, I think thirty-five year old lots.
Three times.
And, you know, if the valley is changing, we can't stop it. The revenue that we need to keep your salaries up and everything else is going to have, there's gonna have to be changes to do that.
Sure. And then all the, and all we require, and we can only have a way of doing that, that would require a bigger process.
Yeah. I mean, the model of nineteen seventy-one is always.
They did the best camp, and that's why there's been seven amendments already.
Right. So, you know, I, I don't think doing the short-term rental was gonna accomplish the density, you know, density of that.
They're gonna change what we got to, to a greater presence.
Right.
Okay, somebody on here, is it you?
Oh, yes, Zoom next. Go ahead. I can copy.
Turn the, we turn the mic to you.
Robert Miller.
Robert Miller, good to hear it from you, and here you go, your arm.
You, two comments, one on what you've done with DSTR. I wholeheartedly support you. The other comment, there's a lot of other items, such as definitions, uh, and like that are part of, uh, what you're listing to the other comments. I'm suggesting that you send the SDRs to one group and go ahead and vote on all the other amendments that are in front of us. I support them all and I would suggest pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And in fact, we had to sidebar here just real quick. We, that's the intent of the rest of the meeting. We decided we're gonna do next. Because this is a board of commissioners meeting instead. So we're giving everybody a chance. Thank you, Robert. Anybody else? Yeah, you can make one. They're listening. And Debbie can't.
Harold, I'm an animal. He has eight awards, so I might get that in there. Uh, the attorney from New York, he's talked about the most invasive ranch where the Colorado State Court of Appeals kept with the resident and said that the HOA could not say that was a business because the, because the short-term rental was actually residential use. So the HOA had to amend its, its covenants in order to change that. So that's where it was. SDRs that have been banned in states, Florida, Pennsylvania, Georgia, Delaware, Maine, Vermont, I wouldn't give you two cents for some of those states, but they haven't been banned, period, nothing. In Miami, it's a twenty thousand dollar bond if you have a short-term rental, recall. Colorado Springs, no cap if you're non-owner units or additional requirements are required if you're, if you're not, uh, resident. New Orleans, Honolulu, Jersey City, Denver, Miami, uh, Louisville, Kentucky, even more that were listening here aren't having issues right now with short-term rentals, not long-term rentals, because that's a different animal, short-term rentals. Uh, Denver, Denver City Council approves thousand-dollar bonds if a company is violating short-term rentals. Urea, it's hard to get to Urea.
It's Urea.
Urea. Urea, is it right? I did not know. Urea, Texas.
And Julen, and Julen.
I've known you for four years, so I'm trying to get your, your names here. How you guys talk? Urea, Urea, Colorado, they are now, uh, adopting the short-term rental regulations to protect the public health, safety, and welfare to preserve the character and ambivalence and hidden, where it's of the neighborhood. One of the best things I saw here was, uh, the old Colorado. Now says, they, they created covenants and created rules. Owners must live in their property ten months out of the year to be a short-term rental. Interesting.
That's gonna be crowded.
Aspen, Aspen has, uh, their population is six thousand six hundred and two thousand ten. It's now seventy-four old lives, but thirteen hundred and twenty-three active short-term rentals in Aspen. In fact, I saw, uh, and here are the elk herd population, Plunkton, Aspen, Bell Area, human use grow, human use grows. So this, so over twenty-five thousand elk herds that are now down to ten thousand in those areas. Also the traffic, the population and all the others. And we're not asking for people to stop the short-term rentals. That's not what this is about. This is to help get a handle on it. Because if we don't, we will have issues later. Because it's not you individuals that follow the rules and regulations. It's the people that don't. It's that one or two percent that's gonna kill us. And they will get away with everything if we also have some kind of rules and regulations to stop it. Thanks.
Good, good point. I get the name one point. Sorry, Danny. I agree. Uh, the good news is in Custer County, ski industry is, I'll mention that. One of the issues is draw, drew, our son just participated with twenty other kids in one, two people from a park. Go skiing. It's a short-term rental. So that's the good news. We did have two ski events here. I don't know if you remember, you know, you know their property too. There, there was the Silver Hill. It's permanent. What was it? Conchismore. And the other one was Silver Hill down on, that's where I was. Well, it's, it's good that the ski, these mountains face east and west, but the sun's always burning on the million miles of ski. But, but the point that I'm trying to make is, we, we are trying to, I think, and we want, we can't stop growth entirely. We can control the growth and I think we've got a good start. Uh, these questions are really helping us refine what you discussed. I appreciate the answers and the questions. Somebody new up here wants to talk. Alright, let's, uh, let's go with, is there, Debbie, did you have one last thing?
Yeah, it's a simple one.
Make it simple. And then we're gonna.
Yeah. I know it's time to wrap up as far as this is concerned. And I guess the question is, where do we go from here? I hope all three of you understand that I speak passionately for tourism. Tourism is over thirty percent of our economic economy. And then talking about the land use, according to, uh, sure, it's a little late, uh, two thousand ten census, three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six housing units, approximately forty-nine percent are owner-occupied and another forty-two percent are seasonal. Is that a dog?
Yeah.
So forty-two percent are seasonal or second homes. That means forty-two percent of the homes are empty. Would you rather keep them empty with no activity or bring economic vitality to the community? And then also another interesting point, of all the acreage of Custer County, forty percent is public land, sixty percent is private land, and I need someone who's good in that. Because of the sixty percent, seventy-five percent of the private land is agricultural land. So you're talking about a really small piece of land that has short-term rentals on it. So just something to keep in mind. But I would like to ask, where do we go from here?
Yeah, so we're moving on.
Okay, thank you. But, but really, I, I have to work with you guys. I think you're my boss, being on the tourism board. And I just want you to understand where I'm coming from is that I care very much about this valley. I hope to, I don't want to die, but I hope to live in this valley for the rest of my life. And I want it to be a thriving community. We've driven through too many dead towns. I don't want that to happen to Custer County. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to come to make a quick comment. It doesn't need to be on crack. We live on eighty-one acres. We put it in conservation easement to preserve the land. And in that conservation easement, we follow out our short-term rentals. That's part of the stipulation. Win, 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 win.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. Alright, that's gonna wrap it up. Uh, we need to move on. It's, uh, four o'clock. And, uh, this is a board we need to discuss between us. Debbie, listen to the comments.
I think it's time.
You're right. a board we need to discuss between us, Debbie, listen to the comments, you're right, but what we're, we're headed next is to deal with questions, we got a lot, and we still need, and we try to get some good answers back to help clarify, I don't know that it was clarified, and it doesn't need to be in writing, it needs to be reiterated somehow to clarify what we heard, and I think, to my point, we'll ask Tom, Kevin, to come, to see what we should do, and I think part of it's been involved.
Are you, do you realize people out?
Yeah.
I need to take a five-minute reset.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we ought to start with a reset. You guys, if you are more in love than the state, if this is a drawing vote on, we gotta decide on how.
Motion, Thomas, motion.
Motion, uh, great, take it by, come back. It's also, I think, we've had a couple of, a lot of data here, nice, very good communication back and forth, and some of the, it was clear to me that we probably need to have some refined, more clarification in the language as it's presented, because this, this vote they sent to the county, and maybe that was a problem, and then, I don't know, that it might be perfect, even, your crew taking a look, I don't know, but we need to talk about it. Kevin, let's, let's hear it, here.
Me in here first. Uh, like I said before, I know it's a complex issue, and, um, comment right off of that, one thing that I've been wrestling back and forth with as well, that actually was not addressed here earlier, is the effect that the short-term rentals have on our townhouse, which is another situation we have, and it's a totally different situation, but they are related. And that's one of the issues I'm struggling with as well, because of the fact that if you can pull in, uh, say, although I'm just throwing numbers out here, these aren't factual numbers, so, but if you can pull in, say, four thousand dollars a month on a short-term rental versus, say, twelve hundred dollars on a long-term rental, that makes those that are coming in as, and buying land that has an investment, and that's not the case in every case, but it is part of the situation, uh, that affects the prices of the properties that are here existing, which drives those prices up, which in one sense is good, but then for those that live and work here in the county, for them to, uh, to be able to afford to live here, uh, that has to be that problem.
That's a good one.
Uh, that is one thing I struggle with, I don't know, uh, there's not an easy answer to this whole situation. Uh, I, I am, like I said before, as well, I, I can see both sides of this issue, that being, one side, I enjoy staying in short-term rentals, I don't travel around a lot of the way, it's a lot nicer to go and jump in somebody's cabin and maybe go out and have a hot tub out the back door than it is to go to a seven, eight-story motel or something right there along the interstate, say. Uh, and, uh, so it's difficult, and I'm not sure exactly what the answer is, I know, my first comment when I, you know, when they brought these to us, was it's cumbersome, and yet, they, they streamlined it from what it was before, and, uh, which, I guess, I've heard of your opposite, uh, and technically, we are somewhat of your opposite, that's the nature of these. Uh, and all that being said, there does need to be some control, and I, I agree wholeheartedly, I've, I've said it to a lot of people, I'm a guy that says, this is my property, you shouldn't be able to tell me what to do with it, but then there has to be a line drawn to that statement as well, because when what you do affects both around you, then it's not your right. Uh, that being said, right there, uh, being my open comments.
Tom?
I have three quicks, sir, I'll follow up after you.
All right. Yeah, I had some of the same thoughts, thanks for the streamline thing, and I know we talked about how to, to do this, and not make it as cumbersome either the bureaucratic pieces of this, I think there's room to tweak it, based on a lot of the comments we got today, to clarify it, and show where we have, we've done your best to streamline the process, and also to clarify the requirement, you know, that it is, that it's causal to be an issue, perhaps, I don't know, and then, the issue with, you know, it's, it's doing the right thing to protect not only the land use and the, that characteristic that would then, the controls that we already established within zoning laws and water rights, but it's also to protect the rent, because right now, you know, if you had a big party and loaded up the ground with a bunch of waste products that are not good, and then compaction major, that's an issue, and it also, so that's a safety and health issue. The other one is, if you had a fire in, in the timber from somewhere, and you had to evacuate, who do you call? How do you find out who's there? And I think they need, people need to understand that they, clearly, in the reg, was the process, and I, I really applaud you all for the package that you're proposing, because the homeowners, when you get a homeowner's package, if you're gonna be a first-time buyer for a residence, the permit does some of that away, am I right, Jackie?
Yes.
And so, so the homeowner has the advantage doing that, but if he's written it out, what are the rules? Who does he go to? How does he get hold of share? Who's what, and how do we evacuate, those kinds of things? I think you're addressing, that needs to be clearer, maybe, and how, how the process goes, and then you're holding the landowner, the short-term rental guy that owns the property accountable, to make sure that they are abiding by the same rules and regulations, make it clear that a normal homeowner is accountable for. If I had a wedding at my house, and I did, we didn't let them in the house, we had two hundred people, and it was a nice party, matter of fact, it's such a nice party body, people didn't want to leave it, believe it or not, they had a music show, and they had a waiting room, I mean, it was something, but there's ways to handle it, so you need to make that clear. And I got others that I know that Tom, and probably touch on, and there's other questions maybe that if we do decide to go back a part of this, uh, regulation guidance change that we're proposing here, that we could address in a workshop with the, with us, perhaps, and, or, and have another discussion with the public, if that's in the cards for you guys, but we're looking at you, Vic, and your team to, to do that. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I've got some comments, I mean, winning is appropriate, I'm certainly prepared to interview some motions we're looking forward to consider. Um, I tried to listen very carefully today, tried to take as many notes as I could, I hope the speakers do not think I was ignoring them, just because I was not making eye contact. One of my commitments when I came here today was to jot down this many notes so that I had an accurate record of what people thought, and I'm gonna go home and say, well, I don't know, can't really remember what Charlie said, and I know he's in this particular position, well, that wasn't enough for me, so please accept my apologies for that. Uh, nobody really wants to talk about it, so I will. In my opinion, we've danced around the real issue here, and that is about managing the growth of our county. This happens to be one way, that that may or may not be done. I have the opinion that if we do not manage short-term rentals to some degree, then we will not be managing our growth, and I really believe that the majority of the people that live in this county do want some form of managed growth. I don't think they want this county to grow willy-nilly, I don't think they want encroachment on every facet of their life. Uh, I think most people would agree that if we have unchecked influx into this valley in the next twenty years, it will definitely be different. I made a comment to my good friend back there, Mr. Rob, a little bit ago, I'm sixty-seven years old, I'm prepared, in twenty years, I will be gone. So this battle isn't about me and my forty-two acres on our road, this battle is about what this county is gonna look like for the next fifty years. I've looked at the numbers from Dole, their projected growth rates for our county over the next thirty years, it doesn't appear to be significant when you compare to other counties, but when you look at this county, and I look at those numbers, I think they are significant, and that doesn't mean I'm against that, that doesn't mean I want to be part or parcel to having some oversight on what that looks like in our county, so to me, the issue really is managed growth. Uh, I respect Deb Abbott, I have gone to Matt with Deb Abbott, I wish she could still here, she knows, we've already had this conversation, I'm not speaking out of school, she is passionate about tourism, not everybody in this county is passionate about tourism, I think we all need to know and understand that, the people that are passionate about tourism will show up to these kind of things and talk about tourism, that's great, that's what makes a civic run, but it doesn't mean that we, that the people we represent in this county all feel the same way about tourism, believe me, people aren't gonna get real vocal when they come to me and say, well, I don't, I don't give a crap if we have another tourist ever come to this valley. They're not gonna say that to probably, but they don't have a problem saying that to an elected official, as a reminder that we were voted in office to represent everybody. So I take exception with Deb's, um, overzealous embellishment of the fact that there's one question that we need to consider, and she said, the one question we need to consider as commissioners is, how prosperous do you want this county to be? That is not the only question, that is an economic development question. I can't stay in this office and represent only economic development issues or initiatives, doesn't work that way, that's one part of it, so certainly, in my opinion, that is not the only question. Um, council already interested, but you just, I just can't sit here and let these statements go by, this elected official in this county, and the statement of, I can do whatever I want with my land, no, you can't, this is an organized civil society, why is that? Because by God, we have rules. I live on forty-two acres, I don't have to be able to do whatever I want, but as council, I think he's still here, pointed out, I can't legally have a landfill, I can't legally have, uh, self-storyed units, which are cat cows, and I'd love to have one of mine, I guess I could, if I went through the process of the rules that were set for me to do that. I think these proposed amendments are nothing more than an extension of a lot of rules and regulations that we live in, and we're gonna be part of a productive, harmonious society. Those days, all of my whatever I own, my land are gone, we all know that, and we don't own our land if you have a mortgage payment, right? We should all be able to stand up and face that fact. So I just think the platitudes need to be raised in a little bit, and we're trying, as board of commissioners, to do what's right for this county, and I was gonna say everybody, but hopefully, at least the majority of everybody, because surely, you realize that we can't fall into the loudest squeak against the grease.
What?
Because twenty people show up, or actually, there was forty-seven, if forty-seven people show up and yell and scream at us about short-term rentals, that does not mean that is reflective of all the constituents of this county, that's what I'm saying, squeaking wheel doesn't interfere, doesn't mean we won't listen to the squeak, which I hope we did here today. So I'm not gonna belabor that. What I would like to do, and again, I think in a, in a friendly manner, to Chairman, I'd like to discuss our options, again, I just don't wanna jump out and make a bunch of motions that may appear to be unfriendly to my co-commissioners.
Right, yeah, we've got options, one is to just, we've heard everything, this thing written perfectly, let's adopt it, that's one, the other one is, we've heard some issues that might warrant some clarifications, so we might deal with, pass it with some exceptions, pass the front end, I think, uh, Miller made a good point on that, and I think we brought it before, and the other one is, is to table it and go back and get, and work on some of the other things you brought up, Tom, and there are lots of questions over there, as far as, making sure that, and I believe that they've done a good job of making sure it applies to the managed growth of the county, to that, I'm sorry, managed growth, I missed it, as it applies to growth of the county too, to be considered, I don't know if that's applicable necessarily, but I think that's what's embedded in the whole zoning plan process, and that with water issues and subject systems, so, anyway, I think those are three choices, I thought of the fourth one, and maybe you have something different on there, Tom.
Well, I, with respect, I would move that we refer section nine point one zero back to the planning commission with some direction, and I can expound on that now, or I can wait until we vote, doesn't matter, but that is my motion to refer.
Well, I'd rather, we can do it in two steps, or you can include the whole thing.
Uh, my motion is just to refer nine point one zero.
Okay, so there's a motion to refer nine point zero, the section?
Nine point one zero.
Nine point one zero.
Section nine one zero, yes.
Is that in its entirety?
That's correct.
Okay, in its entirety, you've got to go back and tweak, or whatever it means, so there's a motion on the floor, any comments, reception?
I do.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, the reason I made this motion to refer back to the planning commission is I believe we've overlooked some things that weren't even mentioned here today, um, and so I would like to iterate those things I made in the planning commission, and at least I think they'll have some direction from where we're coming from.
Yeah, I had the same issue too, because there's things that came up in my mind, why are they in here? We don't necessarily need some of that stuff, so maybe, what you said.
I'm not talking to the planning commission now, I'm talking to my fellow commissioners, so if you have objections or other things, certainly, I'll entertain them, I'm just putting something on the table here for a session. So I think under section nine point ten point two point B, uh, which specifically, uh, well, which addresses the specific requirements, I would like to see some language in there that, uh, addresses that the appropriate lodging tax must be paid in current for an STR to continue to operate. I would also like to see language under that same heading about limiting, and we did talk about this a little bit today, about limiting the advertising language that goes beyond the approved subject of what the subject, uh, permit would allow, and then I think something else that the planning commission needs to consider, in my opinion, would be the number of short-term rentals that can operate on less than thirty-five acres and on more than thirty-five acres. Thank you, sir.
Okay, I guess maybe that's a last one, isn't that one per, because that's the, isn't he got, Tom's that?
The legislature doesn't speak to that, sir.
Right, that's what I said, right now, I guess I gotta ask, make it clear, he just mentioned that we ought to address whether there's more, is there more than one STR allowed thirty-five acre, or what was the?
How many STRs can operate on less than thirty-five acres, and how many can operate on greater than? than 35 acres?
Right. Isn't that, what's your answer? Is that something?
Well...
No, I just, because it matters on whatever, well, it doesn't matter, we're going to discuss it anyway.
And then the last thing I had, I would like to see, and I'm sorry, I've got a busy job, I just got down, so I was maybe a little random. Maybe Jackie and Vic can help out. I would like to see them revisit the language that requires 24/7 telephone service at these short-term rental sites. My personal opinion is, I think that's unreasonable.
Okay. That, that's, those are your list, uh...
Well, we're still in a discussion. That's correct.
That's right. And so I agree, that, those are issues that need to be, I had the 24-hour one as well. I had also, there are things that are already in place that we don't need to reiterate here in Deb bureaucracy, and that is, why, why is there a requirement to Deb, the water and sanitation facilities have some gills when you go through the building process? It's already there, there's a way to enforce that already. The proof of...
And what was that?
That's on 91, 910 dot 2. And Tom's 24-hour one is 910 dot 2B4.
Okay.
And we...
I got in to the four.
Is what your career plan is about.
Thanks, sir. Yes, I could not get my eye on that. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
We're not counting. It's just the point is, this is something we need to discuss. And I thought also the facilities greater than what the bills, I don't know why that's in there, because you already, for homeowners in general, we know that you can push, you can put that up in, when there's five piece of property, and then you have a package for the homeowner's STRs. It covers that already as part of the process, so maybe it can be left in.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the last, all of a sudden, we need a request from the county to plant a house on obscure roads every day.
They have, right, and they have to understand what roads are dedicated and what aren't.
Well, I think that language would be helpful, but we're not, when I have services greater than what's already available, just because they have to be sure.
Right. And maybe it's like, anyway, that's something to discuss more specifically, so they understand. Because I get a lot of questions, are people asking us to apply roads that aren't dedicated and owned by the county, because they're not brought up by county standards. And then I, I made that out of them, but we can discuss that later. Kevin, did you have any to point out?
Uh, I had Mark.
Microphone.
Yeah, could you use your mic, sir? I'm sorry. Yeah. I had Mark, uh, 910 two B two, in reference to bunk houses.
Can you get on that microphone, sir?
I'm sorry, I apologize. And I think maybe it's actually defined, excuse me, it's actually defined earlier in the regulations and existing, that are existing now, and that is under 6.43.
Page number, please?
That would be page number 50, specifically for bunk houses. And that was brought up today because they were referred to as bunk houses. In the existing regulations now, it states under bunk houses as number three F and G, said it specifically says bunk houses cannot be separately rented or leased, and there is no cooking allowed in a bunk house. You are allowed to have water if the well permit allows it. So that is already existing, but I don't know if it needs to, back here where it states that bunk houses and accessory structures cannot be rented. I didn't know if we could put a reference there, possibly C 6.4. So that it just brings a little more clarification to that. And that could be just terminology. Everybody, I don't know, everybody's after the words here. Bunk houses are specifically addressed here. They refer to bunk houses when actually, maybe it's not, that's just a term to choose. I have a spare bedroom in my head, at my place, I refer to it sometimes as bunk houses, it's a riverbed, yeah. So that's, that could be just terminology, but maybe we could clarify that as well. So I think there probably are a few things that we can clarify. I would have a question, mainly because I am doing, I don't know exactly how all the processes work, is there a way that we can sit with the planning commission and work through some of these?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because now it's, it's kind of a handless process here, where they have to have their meetings and put it together, and then it comes to us, and now we have to make adjustments here.
We can have a workshop with the planning, and then have them refine the data and other stuff. I agree, Kevin, Tom, as far as the motion's concerned, I think there's other things that might be impacted a little bit, if we look hard at questions that we just received from people that might help clarify other things as well, and make it more concise and more, less burdensome. So I'm all for the motion. There are any public comments?
I have some further discussion, sir.
Say again?
I have further discussion.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Tom. I thought you... No, I appreciate that. That's all I wanted.
Looked for it, huh?
I missed the point. The other thing I would ask that the planning commission consider is their proposed 9.10.6.
910?
910.6, STR density, there's no stuff. I would like to see them reconsider the cats, whether that is a solid number or that is a percentage of existing structures within the zone. I do support the idea of cats by zone, not countywide, for obvious reasons, I think. But I would like to see the planning commission give that further consideration and consider maybe look at that in a different vein.
And I'll take it a step further, because I want to hear why it wouldn't need it at all, as an option, that, because we're in the control of density, and I thought that's how this was set up, if you needed to find it or...
Yeah, I mean, my thought is pretty clear, it's about managing the growth of this county.
Okay.
And then just a quick comment, I guess I'm a little strung out on the whole cumbersome thing. I can understand if short-term rental folks come in and say, "This is way too cumbersome of a process for me as a short-term rental." But I think what I've heard basically is they think it's too cumbersome for us. I think we should decide what's too cumbersome for us.
And if you haven't been doing anything in the first place, anything above that is cumbersome. So we need to deal with reality. Comments from the public?
Do you just have a second, Tom?
Yes.
No.
I don't think we did, no. You went straight to, you went straight to...
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I, I thought he did already, I'm sorry. Okay, so now we had, and we had a lot of discussion beforehand, so that's okay. We have a motion to defer a poll section, 9.10, entire section, and discuss it, separate section.
All of it? To send that back to the planning commission.
Into the planning commission, that's, that's very good. All right, that's what we did say. We've had some discussion already. If there's any more from the board, let's hear some more discussion. If not, we'll ask the public.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, let's go. Anybody out there got a comment? I can see anxious over here.
I have a comment.
Yeah, it needs to be...
They got to allow enough.
Because it's being recorded.
Yeah.
Take the mic.
I just want to ask you...
Your name, sir?
Say your name again, I know.
Dr. Don Munson.
Munson.
I just want to make sure that the comment that I made about ensuring as part of this that the STR is properly insured, because the, I don't think a lot of people realize they're not, they're homeowners, you can go to, with any insurance company and find, and ask them, "If you do an STR, is your standard homeowner's covered?" And they'll tell you, "No." They'll just flat tell you, "No." My dad's a general insurer, tell you that.
Sure.
And that's, in a lot of rentals, a lot of rentals, you do rentals, even if it's long-term, you're supposed to have a landlord policy. And that's various state, but in most states, the, you know, the coverage is not for, for short-term. And the other thing is...
Well, I'll do a question, so make sure you got the, is that liability only, or is that...
No, sir, that, well, it is largely liability, but it's also saying, saying that short-term rental policy, I'm talking about protecting them too.
I know, I...
Say it, burn it down.
But they have a choice, but they...
So, but, well, if, if they have, if they have a fire caused by a short-term rental rent, and you just find out, they won't cover it.
Where are we going to be in court, be all alone?
That, well, they, it's very limited, they have a very limited...
That's something that's...
So the other thing is the water, because this DNR should be consulted as to what they're going to require with, if in fact these, if in fact they start requiring for them to have what is called a corporate or commercial well permit, if they need five acre augmentated lots to be had. Do we have a lot of, we have 526 in Port Huron. And those, and those, you know, there's also Silver Lakes, Middle Valley, East Cliff, all those other lots are all under that augmentation plan that basically really limits the use of the well.
Okay.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman, I may.
Okay.
Mr. Jack, when we, when your office and planning commission considers an application for a business in the county, for an SGP or some variants of that, do you take into account insurance coverage on those businesses?
During the planning commission meeting, we can ask for as far as a condition, a million dollars is the minimum that we ask for.
Do you ask for it?
Yes.
Thank you.
We ask for a million dollars.
For a business?
A minimum.
Appreciate it.
No, this is, SGP, we apply.
And again, I would remind us that an SGP is just a form of a variance, is that correct, Kevin?
Yes, it is. It's just another name for another permit.
One of those five. Hey, that doesn't fly to you.
Those are rules.
Yes.
Sure. All right. Other comments? Go ahead, uh...
Caterina.
Have Caterina.
Caterina Sky, so I want to address Kevin for you in terms of, and all of us really, in terms of concerns about people that live in the county, work in the county. I have not done an official research or scientific exploration in regards to, you know, people living here, having affordable housing. Now, a lot of the STRs are actually homes that a lot of regular folks, that let's say work at Chappies, a mom with children, you know, three kids, single mom, they couldn't afford like what my, for instance, my mortgage for my STRs, and I've talked with other people as well. So what I'm suggesting that that, and I mentioned it in the meeting, that there is possibility something the county is out there to address with having more affordable housing, because like you said, you stay in the house, and a lot of people can't, wouldn't afford the rent. So it's somewhere a little bit of a different category. There are like a one-bedroom STRs here and there, but the majority are like vacation rentals. So a little bit separate issue, they overlap some, but I would just remind you, oh, that's my view of what I see also in cities where they're concerned from vacation cities.
And I'll address that some, and I think I stated they are different issues, but they do, they do affect one another. And we are, as a matter of fact, working, trying to get more affordable housing in the county. And Charles Volbley that was here as well today is on that board as well, and that's a process moving forward. But that's, that's an active issue that we have, is that it is hard for those that work in this community to be able to afford to live in this community. And this, to a degree, is actually makes sense.
Yeah, and I, my suggestion or comment on that would be if, if there's a regulation towards an STR in terms of, because of that concern, you know, maybe that would apply to properties that are like a one or two bedroom place, that actually somebody working in the county on a low-income job actually afford to rent, and that there would be a cap on that, that not all of them become STRs. So I don't know, I'm just, that's just my comment.
And that's not the only reason, but that, that is one thing that enters into the equation. And so, and it had not been addressed, and so I wanted to bring that out, because it is a part of the situation. And I know you can't hear it by, by stopping STRs, and I don't want to stop STRs, but they do, there does need to be accountability, I guess would be a good term, but that doesn't fit exactly either. But like I say, I'm definitely not against STRs, because I like to use them. You know, if they were, if they were out a lot, I would be able to go use them, so take that for what you believe.
Yeah, and I don't feel anybody necessarily against it. I appreciate everybody, I appreciate what you said, Tom, in terms of also saying, oh, seriously, where I was wondering if you were, you know, paying attention more. Just one of those super serious people.
Sure, you're not all...
Yeah, yeah. I told you get it now, but...
I assure you, serious side of me before, but it won't be great.
No, no, I like serious people. I didn't use the base of the debate.
No, that's fine.
But I would mention that comment beforehand at your introduction, so that people know that that's how you are, because there were other people wondering, just first we'll be back up. Sorry.
No, my joke is to be required, man. I want to sit here and keep my mouth shut and listen today. That's what was my whole, that's all I prayed out, was to just sit here and listen.
And I, I have to tell that, I raised that too. Questioning you guys all, you all have been styling, I like it, thank you. You were talking about the lodging tax, so that came up in one of the workshops before. So just if you are supporting Airbnbs or an STR, sorry, lodging tax, we had talked about it at one point, I don't know if you remember, there's a difference between lodging, like a hotel and an Airbnb. A lodging tax would really inhibit some of the properties because, and the STR owners, because the lodging tax is way higher than business tax, and would put quite a number of people out.
Well, just a point of clarification, the lodging tax I'm referring to was voted by the citizens in, in November of 2007, or after January 1 of 2008. It's 2% across the board, whether it's a commercial hotel or an STR business, doesn't matter. I'm not talking about property tax, I'm just talking about the lodging tax that everybody should pay, doesn't mean they are, but that's what I would refer to, is just the lodging tax.
Oh, okay, because somebody said that the lodging tax was like 29%.
Yeah, it's 27% is the accept valuation rate on commercial, and 90% on residential. Pretty different.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. In terms of the insurance that this gentleman was brought up, so Airbnb and VRBO, right, he recommends people already, in order to be on those platforms, you have to comply with quite a lot of rules on their end in order to be successful and be considered to stay on a platform. We went to that at workshops and so forth, and they also recommended personal insurance directly from, which for instance, I have on my property, I have insurance through VRBO and Airbnb, and I have my own personal insurance that I hand out, so...
Yeah, what you were mentioning is, you're saying is correct. What I was saying is, to qualify...
is, to qualify for Airbnb, VRBO, you have to have certain things underneath that, you have to have a reliable homeowner's policy, and it's not viable if they don't know that you're, you're li, literally leasing it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, most STR people I know, because they care-
It's called capitalism controlling, because if you want to stay in business, you comply.
Exactly.
In a represent-
Absolutely, yes. Um, and a lot of these folks, I went here in the valley, I owned three Airbnbs in Denver on my property where there was, my girlfriend, my mom goes in Denver.
Okay, we need to move on.
Yeah, so anyways, so insurance, I'm just telling you, people are concerned, something to be mentioned, maybe, but people also want to protect their assets, so not that many people are out of regulation with that. Um, Tom, one thing you said, I wanted, just to get clarification, you said, you know, we were, some people were saying that this process was too cumbersome for them, and then you said, you know, that it's not cumbersome for you guys, um, but it could just terrify for-
I can't, I didn't say it's cumbersome from us, I said, I think it's our concern whether or not it's cumbersome.
Mm-hmm.
Me, whether we care, I'm teasing, but that, but that's the point, is, is we, we are trying, if it's looks cumbersome to us, for sure, we want to clean it up.
Mm-hmm.
It may impact the STR differently, and that's just something that we have to live with, so that's what we thought.
Mm.
My point is a little more direct than that, if we fail to do our due diligence because of cumbersomeness, we need to vote it out of office, that shouldn't have any part in the conversation. I get the whole thing of saying, you know, you need to be fiscally responsible with the money you're giving to you, with your time and your labor, correct, I get that, but just because something appears to be cumbersome, doesn't mean we need to shy away from it and say, yeah, let's just, let's just get to the lowest common denominator and move on, I don't think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've talked about two different things, because cumbersome was the bureaucracy of you applying for it, he talked also about us.
Well, and we're also concerned about the planning commission and you guys' not having undue work either, so we're not just caring about us, and I, well, here, I'm, when we've discussed between the STRs, we also care around your side in terms of cumbersome, it wasn't just like, make it easy to us and, you know, don't care.
I get to make it easy for us, part of the action.
And the last, last thing I want to, I really, uh, statistics that you may want to look at in terms of burden on resources, so this gentleman, I forgot your name, I can't remember.
Charlie.
Charlie, I'll never forget, and, um, and there's other statistics out there that actually STRs are statistically put less, um, in terms of, what we're looking at, the resources, when statistically, than long-term rates, because, look, and this is statistically improvement, so I don't know if that's everywhere, but we have statistics for that in the county, and I'm only saying that, again, I'm not only speaking, I want to put my, push my STRs who, I'm, I want to be in this valley as long as possible, and love this valley, um, but I, and I'm concerned about, many people are, but please consider that in your thinking, that they're not, they're not using as many resources, so you could pass that information on to them.
And just to be clear, Kevin, she cares about weathering, too.
She would, yeah.
It's not the valley, it's the county.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I? Uh, one thing I want to make sure we do here in this motion to refer is, is give our very clear assessments of what we expect from the planning commission. I don't want them to get this referred back and then go, well, what the hell they want us to do it? I laid out four things, I want to add one more for their consideration, that being asked, put it in, but I don't consider, and that is to make some kind of mention in this, uh, 9.10 portion, uh, that addresses these pre-1971, I hate to use the term because it brings me to death with it, uh, but lodging businesses that were in existence prior to April 6th, 1971.
Please, Ellen.
I heard some smart analysts out there, but I didn't understand it.
It's recurring.
I can't believe it.
Yeah.
Different parts of that, um, I think it would be good if we could, maybe set up a workshop, uh, where we actually sit down with them, uh, that would give us all an opportunity to, to look at and, uh, get some more points that might need to be addressed and sit down together, to where, uh, we can address them face-to-face, and that would maybe be the next step, and then-
Yeah.
So, uh, I would agree, we need to, we don't need to just send it back to them, let them, and then, and then tell, oh, you need to change this again, I think we need to do it as a unit, uh, so that we have a document that can come out the other end.
Maybe just a quick thought on that, and I would refer to, to, yeah, the two planning commission, they're, they're still in the group, still.
I got three. Dale was right in front of me.
One.
Two, three.
Two.
I'm sorry.
I keep confusing her.
So, Vic, I'll, I'll practice question to you, but really it's to both of you, do you believe that the, the resolution lays that out, we sit down and have a workshop or not? I don't see that in the resolution myself, I think it would be good, but I don't think it's allowable, I don't know.
Well, I, I think we need to get together, you know, I, it's not, I tell you.
Yes.
I think the planning commission functions separately from-
Oh, yeah, you understand me. I guess I don't understand the question.
Well, I'm saying, I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate for VOCC to sit down with the planning commission and have a big working session, I think this resolution states that you guys do the work, you bring it to us, if we don't like it, we send it back to you, with recommendations. I'm just, if you guys feel differently, that's fine, I'm just telling you what I think, I don't see any language in the resolution that, that allows for these two organizations or these two entities-
Tom, Tom's a hundred percent.
-to enter concern.
I mean, that should-
I don't like it, you talk about cumbersome, there you go, that does increase the competency-
Right.
Because they need to build a motion separate from us, and then bring their recommendations to us, that's a pretty two branches of government.
Uh, and also, we reserve the right to, because we've been giving you some food for thought, you need to take a look at the other issues, we reserve the revenue on the issues that were not issued.
No, the next step is for you to take what you believe during this meeting, and put it in writing that you want the planning commission to revisit the zoning resolution.
And we've done that to the motion, that will be a right, if there's something else that we think of, while I'm saying-
Wait, before I do the sections.
You need, you need to address their motion, and what we're talking about now is section nine.
That is correct, and I, I've tried to enumerate what I expected to go with that.
Yeah.
Not necessarily the motion, the motion needs to refer, but that's why I was clearly trying to outline, if you want us to put that in writing, then we can-
Yeah, and-
-have this conversation here and see, or that.
And as part of the minutes, we could do that.
I'd like to comment, I, I, yes, we need that official, uh, request from you to work on, but that doesn't mean that we can't have a workshop, and you can't attend, and, and we've done that, quite often.
Right.
That's what I was thinking, so, is that-
Well, I study a million Republican characters, certainly didn't feel like I was a, uh, participating member of the-
We said, sign.
That.
Yeah, we understand that, I can all-
So, your expectation would be for us to give you written direction of what, of the reason we refer this back, if the motion passes, is that correct?
That would be good, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll talk to a question then.
Aye.
If we're gonna do that, then there's, there's a couple of issues that I think we need to clarify, and one of them is, is are we, are, I need a sense from you, or we need a sense from you, on are we gonna consider administering, are we gonna consider, uh, what's in this, this current thing now, because that, that's, that's a big difference.
Well, I guess that's something, the commission is gonna have to have to do that all about, correct?
Yes, and, and, and that, you sort of, you know, I think there's a mix there, because some of that, in the end, what we said, we're accountable, in the end, and so, uh, and we can allow administrative actions happen, and that happens already, and it doesn't come to us unless it is an issue of significance that requires us to appear.
Uh, yeah, correct, sir. It has to come to us from them, and on recommendations.
Right, that's what I meant.
Okay. It appears to me to answer the question, Vic, we need to sit in a meeting and have firm dialogue, I've given today other than what my issue is with this, if we as a group of commissioners decide there's other things, we'll write those down and submit those, refer those back to you.
Very good. And personally, my, my personal desire is, we didn't waste, I don't want to waste people's time, and gave us a lot of food for thought, if it requires something that I missed, uh, and I, and I've got a list of things here, I can go into and then come back, and that's why I said reserve the right, I'll put it in writing and say, take a look at it, as a panda, just like Tom and I, and have already, et cetera. So, so, that, don't ignore what we've heard, because if they were confused about it, it could be too recent, they narrated it correctly, or we didn't quite get the message across, uh, say it's changed the content, uh, of what it was meant, and if I didn't issue her list of few things here, I'll look at it, but I wrote that last time, that's a dead tongue.
And just, one clarification, Mr. Chairman, may I, just because we refer it, we're gonna get some recommendations back, and then that doesn't mean that's the end of it.
That's right.
We refer it as many times as we want, we all agree, we've got a working document.
Yeah, we got it.
Guys, I saw, I saw, saw him, away back, Charlie's too, too knobbly, he's, he raises his hand high.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Since you're trying to delineate exactly what-
Get it close to your mouth, with your point, I'd point.
I had the same question to work on, on what, what the, the death nail that two provisions together would do for my business, when you say that the ownership changes, determines that permit, uh, and the limit, then I, you know, that ends three, four, five years of my work developing a business, for that, so, so, alright, I adopted a cat, spent $20,000.
So, you're selling your STRs, is that what you're discussing?
I'm not saying, I don't own them all, in most cases I lease, but I've put a ton of money into it, I built a clientele over years, like a business, and then if that guy sells it, I've got a new owner, like recently happened, we'll look at-
No, the lease didn't change unless he, unless he promised, you're, you're the guy that's accountable.
But, but the way this is written, it's all about the owner. I have a lease, no, I-
Then you have no business with a lease, you don't own it, so why are we talking to you?
Because I'm managing.
You see, that's my point, legally, you own the right to that land, to use it, now you see, that, that owner gave you that right?
Right.
So, that's why we're dealing with you, uh, if that doesn't change, if you have a lease, you're still the enemy that we're dealing with.
Not the way I'm-
But that may be wrong, uh, uh-
That's right.
That's right.
I don't exist the way-
No, he does not exist because he's literally with the property owner.
Okay.
Or a land he used to own.
Okay, alright.
The property owner has to sign for everything, but we have a section, Charlie, that has an agent on it.
Right, but you have a section that says, if, like, uh, water checks, they sold the cabin, but I didn't manage it, new owner, nothing's changed, everybody communicates to me, the neighbors know me, I manage everything, it doesn't matter.
The guy with, uh, owns that property has to sign it, we're a land-
Right.
And he can put him in, and-
And I'm just saying, you're looking for that flexibility, the SGP at the town, and the way they're operating, because we're doing these same things over the planning commission, is that it's, that's current SGP has both, there's the owner, and there's the advocate, I'm the applicant, uh, and, and if, and if I, in the property where I own it, I'm the applicant and the owner, I'm just saying, build in that flexibility, because literally, it's kind of like telling-
See, my harder thing, uh, if you're the agent, there's what I know we're an agent, so we're not calling you an advocate, we're calling you an agent.
Okay, I'm sure, I think, I think we're understanding the point that, that you want to be a viable part of that solution, I get that, I understand that, uh, when you say, I manage the property, it sells, and somebody else buys it, nothing's changed, that's not right, the ownership of that property has changed, and that's significant to us, it may not be to you, your business might go on just fine.
But, but, see, Tom, so listen, Charlie, he's right, because something, he has to be liable, that land, the landowner has to take responsibility for making sure that these rules are adhered to.
Unless you go with fires, I'm gonna come after you.
Well, so, so the way that we're handling that town is that it can, it can roll over to the new owner, and nothing's changed, nothing's-
Maybe we would reject that, but it has to go through the process to make him-
Oh, absolutely, no problem with that, I'm just saying, the way it's written, I now, uh, which is killed years of, years of work, because right now, I don't have this, and it says if it owner, if the ownership changes, it terminates, and I'm just saying, build in the flexibility, that's all I'm saying.
And they can come back in and go through the process, right? The only thing I would be concerned about if I'm an STR is where would I fall in under the cap space, that would be a concern to me, if I was managing your property, sold it, and he bought it, and he wants an STR in it, and I come back to the county or to the planning commission and say, I need this, uh, permit, and we say, well, you gotta go to the bottom, that's six, you want people waiting, that would, that would be a concern to me, so-
In fact, is the two together, that's all I was pointing out, but say that it terminates, and you have a cap, those two together, you know, kills my business, and I think we could do a good talk about-
Okay, the question was really called, oh, we do need to agree, that's right, alright, uh, so, let's vote, uh, in favor.
Well, yeah, technically, so we can vote on whether or not we're gonna end discussion and move on, that's what called question, we need to vote on that, if you agree, if you agree, fine, if you don't, we'll continue these discussions, but that's the point.
That's right, so, do we agree that we're gonna vote on this, uh, ask for that vote, Kevin?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Can I? Now, let's vote on, or, I think?
Yes, yeah, we're gonna meet in the-
Right, on the original, uh, motion, which was to refer the section 9.1.0 to the commission. Okay? All in favor, say aye, Kevin?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Can I?
And then, may I, Mr. Chairman, um, although, not every item got discussed equally today, I think we probably knew and understood that, I would move that we approve all of the proposed amendments to the zoning, 2018 zoning resolution, with the exception of section 9.1.0.
Okay, and I have to agree with that, because I went through the other parts in detail as well, and they, they're-
No.
No, I'm just saying, I agree, I'll say-
I agree as well, and a few more points, second, I would-
I'll say, let me have a chance.
So, uh, yeah, I think, uh, you're on the-
Yeah, there you go, pull that microphone, we should do a record, like-
Oh, there you go.
See, I jumped on, I got it all myself.
He's on mic, he's on the table there. Uh, I guess I, I concur, as a point of discussion, that, uh, I don't see any other issues in the rest of the document, uh, thank you guys for, again, for all the work you put into, to all of this.
Okay, discussion. Not from the board, anybody in public.
Are you gonna include my issue, that's all?
Well-
Is that on the-
It's page eight, keep my close.
Did you hear that?
I wonder when Nicole's gonna serve us, yeah, I can see that.
It got covered already, but, um, the only comment I had is on 12.6, cease and desist order, and, um, page, section three in the definitions, uh-
cease and desist order. And, um, page, section three in the definitions. Bill, earlier you said...
Can you just get your page number, Cole? I'm sorry, Max, can you do your...
Uh, I don't have them on page number, sorry. I broke down.
You're in definitions, so...
And so definitions, section three.
Yes.
But I covered section 12/6, cease and desist.
26, 27.
Almost. Okay.
Okay, you said earlier in reference to why you didn't necessarily agree to being intermittent process was that the VOCC needed to be held accountable because you guys are elected officials. However, this definition on the cease and desist order states that the planning and zoning office and the county commissioner alone are able to issue an order to hold people out of their houses, according to...
That's correct.
Yeah.
With the county attorney.
That's right.
Okay, and so I guess, just my comment is those are differing opinions.
And, and in fact, we already have the process on this method of applying across the board, that we have that ability to do that. So, I don't know, do you want, is there any other clarification on it? Because I don't think...
I think, I remember, I think Tom, I did, I did hear that Bill said about, in that cease and desist order, and if I am correct and wrong, can't be done through the planning and zoning along with the attorney without coming to the board. If there is a health violation, that is what normally occurs. I don't know of the other situations, but that can be done without coming to the board.
Yes, it can, but in, in the end, if there's a significant problem, then...
No.
That can also...
Cole, the tree and myself handle the cease and desist when the person affected is done through another office like DHS or the sheriff's office. And then the commissioners do not know nothing about it.
Well, we'd be informed during staff report, right?
Yes, we do at the time.
We do.
Okay, so it's...
Yeah, you get where I was. I get where you're coming from.
Yeah.
I think commissioner candidates' conversations were about short-term rentals specifically, on that whole citizen process.
Yes.
Cease and desist goes down another legal road altogether.
Right, we needed it on the short-term rentals, too.
If we had an attorney, you know, we probably get some kind of a, always back. Sorry, man.
That's what I thought I did.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay.
Thank you.
Wait, time to vote.
Yeah, there's no public comment.
Charlie, be quiet.
Oh.
All right, I'll, I'll vote back. All in favor of the motion, which I've lost track of, to accept the resolution.
To approve the rest of the, excluding 9.1.0.
Approves the rest of the resolution excluding 9.1.0. Say aye, Kevin?
Aye.
Tom?
And thanks to the planning commissioner and her work, I vote aye.
And aye, thanks a lot. Did a great job. I mentioned that at the front of the meeting without cause. Anyway, thank you. Motion passes. Is there any other items? I don't think there is for this meeting.
Aye, everyone.
All right, all right, I adjourn this session. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, too.